Well, welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on August 5th, 2020. As you can tell again, we are still in shelter-in-place restrictions and doing our meetings online with Zoom. If you're here, you've figured out how to do that, but if you need to figure out how to make a comment or how to send an email, the instructions are, once again, on the top of our agenda four. So let's begin with roll call, please, Allison.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Hilmer. Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. We know, I see we have a lot of people in our audience today, so you're welcome. You can see on our agenda, we have a couple of items before we get to probably why all you are here. One of them is a public hearing, and that public hearing was scheduled a while ago. The homeowners here and interested in making sure that we complete this tonight, so that will go first. And then we will have the regular business item that many of you are here for. But before we do that, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Now, public comment is to be on matters that are not on the agenda, and it's limited for what this council can talk about is because it has not been agendized. But we can give direction to a city manager or other minor things. So if you're here for, to speak on something that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand, and Allison will recognize you and let you into our virtual meeting.
Thank you. We have one hand raised. The first public comment will be from Lucina Vedari. It's your turn for public comment.
Hi, Lucina. You're welcome. Let's take your mute off. You're welcome to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda. Hi, Lucina.
Hi, it's Lucina. Hi, Catherine.
Pardon me.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm the first one. Hi, everybody. Well, basically, you know, I just want to say, I'm going to go ahead and read this. "The local Mewocks have attended your board meetings. We basically protest, we've been in the protest to support the changes. We've gone to the rallies, we've supported local groups with movements, and then you call on the Groton tribe to come here and be on the panel? We don't need their help." Let me get this straight. You want me to be your voice. You call on me, you put my picture in the paper, but my real voice doesn't matter because you call on an outside tribe anyway? The Groton tribe is not part of the statue that you, there's no descendants in Larkspur in the tribe. Where were they during the rallies and protests? And then you call on these as the panel when we have clearly stated that we, the descendants of the Coast Mewok of Larkspur, are here and ready to assist. It's kind of looking like I'm your mascot. I will tell you, I'm not your Indian mascot. And if you, Marin, posted that picture without my permission, I would gladly be okay with it if you hadn't lumped me in with the local casino tribe. Why aren't you posting pictures of the Groton tribe at the rallies? Why haven't we heard one peep from them? I'll tell you why. Because they're not here. I will tell you what, I don't need these BS games going on here. I have a history and a story and a part of a local heritage to tell. Notice to you, you can count me out. Just give me 30 more seconds. I don't need to be spending all my time and effort and money when you just are going to call the nearest tribe that has not been around and has no descendants from Larkspur anyway, so you're on your own. How much more disrespectful to the real local Coast Mewocks can you be? This keeps happening over and over for the last couple hundred years. The original people of Marin, and I won't be a part of it, it looks like the Coast Mewok of Southern Marin are being silenced again. When is the last time you've seen so much hype on the Coast Mewocks in Marin County? Never. That's because they don't have a presence in Marin County. They are not here. In fact, the Coast Mewocks of Southern Marin have been, some of the people around have been denied tribal membership in their tribe, and then you call on these people? My grandfather was Camille Yunisia. My lineage and my heritage in Marin is strong. As far as my statue tribe, maybe your, my statue project, maybe your tribe can get, you know, their own statue. Can you believe that they're taking credit for all of this? They step in here and take credit for it? One last note, one last note.
I just want to refer you that the, that the conversation and the education about Drake is not being run by Larkspur. We did not invite who you're speaking of. That is something that is being organized by Supervisor Katie Rice and Supervisor Dennis Redoni. So we had nothing to do with who was invited to speak on the history. Please refer your comments to them and make sure that they understand where you're coming from on that.
One last note, I lost my job due to COVID, and it's not coming back. So I'm in survival mode, so I'm out. This has all cost me time and money and only to have this sort of treatment, not one person from the real descendants of the Mewocks of Larkspur on your panel. I'm out. This is, as long as this is disrespecting Groton. And one more note, Groton members, before you speak, please introduce yourselves and tell us. Are you Pomo or are you Coast Mewok? And please tell us your lineage.
Thank you, Lucina. So I want to remind people that we're going to get to the conversation on the business item about the Sir Francis Drake statue and the references to that. If you would like to speak on that, please hold on and we'll get to it. But if you would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, and if we have a lot of people, we might need to set our timer or else we'll have difficulty getting through our agenda tonight. Do I see anyone else who wants to raise their hand and speak on an item not on the agenda?
Thank you. At this time, there's no further public comment.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Dan Hilmer has raised his hand to make a comment. Oops, you're muted. I'm sorry, Dan, you're still muted. Can we come back to you if we, once the technology has worked out? Okay. All right. This moves us to, since there's no further public comment, at least on items that are not on the agenda, we will go to presentations and proclamations, and there is none. That brings us to four, which is approval of the consent calendar. We have eight items.
Mayor Way.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I apologize for the interruption. There's a presentation this evening.
Oh.
Gail Bloom on the Marin-Sonoma mosquito vector control district board.
I must, I apologize, Gail. That must have been cut off on the bottom of my agenda. Welcome, Gail, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, and I'm glad to be able to report back to you. Not all of you know me. I'm Gail Bloom, and I am Larkspur's representative. The light isn't very good here. Larkspur's representative on the mosquito vector control district. It's a two-county district, Marin and Sonoma. The district is, kind of has an interesting history. It's 105 years old and was the first special district established in California with the original enabling legislation. And it was formed by, largely by a group of suffragettes who wanted to combat the public health risks of the San Rafael Canal. They were concerned about malaria and every other thing that was icky. And I know, Catherine, you think all of this is icky.
I don't like bugs.
I know, I know. The district, let me see, what can I tell you that's really? The district is two counties, as I said. It's three-quarters of a million people and about 2,500 square miles, so it's large, and there's a lot of variety in terms of the land uses. They range from very rural and national seashore to Mount Tamalpais, farming, ranching, and then a succession of hamlets and small towns and then small cities and urban. So there's a lot of different things. We're fortunate that we have so much access to, for example, the bay, the tidal lands and the marshes. They're a wonderful feature of our community. On the other hand, they harbor all the nasty mosquitoes in the world. And not all of them, but it's a great place for mosquitoes to breed. The district really focuses on a few vectors, which would be mosquitoes, which are the most dangerous, ticks, lice, fleas, rodents. Those are the big ones, and then there's some small ones. And we do a lot of testing to establish public health parameters up on Mount Tam, in the watershed, in Roy's Redwoods, and pretty much around the county. There's about half a dozen stations where we monitor pretty carefully. Larkspur itself does not have a tremendous number of sources of mosquito production, although Cordero does, and it's just because of the boundary of where Larkspur is relative to the marsh. Stop me at any point. One of the things that I was asked when I went on, when I was appointed, was to look at fiscal stuff for, as the city's representative on the district, as a trustee. And so to that end, we have about a $10 million a year operating budget. And similarly, that's funded out of recurring operating revenues, mostly, almost exclusively, assessment districts and a adverum, on the adverum role. The, the district manages, you know, has managed or, in a way that's pretty consistent with both the most other agencies, where we had historically underfunded our liabilities for legacy benefits. And I think, going back about 10 years ago, there was virtually no money set aside, for example, for the health benefits. And it has been a point of concern by the grand juries and, and basically informed folks realize that you can't have it sustain itself that way. So we've been working really diligently at trying to bring down, for example, the unfunded health benefits for retirees. And when I started on the, as a trustee, that would be four years ago, the district had about 14% of its liabilities funded, so 85% were unfunded. And over the last couple of years, we've been really trying to reduce that liability. We have no other debts. We have good infrastructure, but we have this large outstanding liability for legacy benefits. And so over, like I said, over the course of the last couple of years, we have funded the health benefits. We will, at the end of this fiscal year, we will be at 55% funded. So that's a huge jump, and we are stretching in order to keep that happening. We might have made an even bigger investment, but we're in such uncertain times.
Can you speak to how the community can use the mosquito and vector control?
Oh, sure.
People listen, we have a large audience tonight, and they need to know what services available that they're paying for already on their taxes.
Yep. Without any additional charge included in your price to be in Larkspur, we provide, we have a guide, who, he is a guide. We have a vector control technician who will come out, and if you think you have rodent problems, he'll help you, he'll examine your house and give you some suggestions about how you might close up openings. There's, we have mosquito technicians.
Is your phone ringing?
It was, it was. We have mosquito technicians that regularly monitor the marsh conditions. We have folks that have basically hazmat suits and go out and find, well, if you find them, they will come and treat the yellow jacket, yellow jacket nests that are either in the trees or in the ground, and there's a whole protocol for that. We have a really good website, and it provides a lot of advice about, you know, if you're going into the watershed and want to hike and how to prevent yourself becoming tick-infested. There's information there. The website is msmosquito, and just like Marin-Sonoma mosquito, and that's the, you'll find the website there.
Gail, may I stop you and see if there's any questions that the council members may have so far of your presentation? Just letting the public know that we, as an appointed person to a, to a board, we receive updates as our representative once a year, that which is what Gail is obligated to do once a year. So, Councilmember Paulson?
Yeah, thank you. Quick question. Does any of your work apply to COVID or the pandemic? Is there any repurposing of resource?
Well, we have introduced a lot of touchless things. For example, if you have mosquitoes in your area, in your, you know, you have a water feature, an ornamental or garden water feature that has quiet water, you know, it's still there. We have things called, we have fish called mosquito fish. And typically, there was a lot more touching that was going on. People can come and get mosquito fish, to answer one of your questions. And it will, they eat mosquitoes close and close to your home. For COVID, you know, we've had to change the way our office operates, just like the city has. People are working remotely. When they come in, it's not all same time. The service technicians are all out in the field, and they have to, they have to use a lot of masking and gloves, and, you know, they're dealing with nasty stuff anyway. So they're, they're usually pretty covered up. But we, we have a more, we have more rigorous handling of everything because of COVID. And the thing that's, you know, is, you know, it's kind of unnerving because you don't know how this plays out into the future. So it's, you know, it makes us, as an organization, very conservative in terms of our ambitions right now.
I think Kevin Harof had a question. Did you? Kevin?
Yeah, am I unmuted? I think I am.
Yes, you're fine.
So I just wanted to thank Gail for having stepped up and assumed responsibility for this role. It's terrific. And it's, it's, it was made personal to me a little bit earlier in the springtime when I was running up on King Mountain and got bit by a deer, a deer tick and had to go on antibiotics for a month. So, you know, the work that you guys do to help manage those challenges in our community is just really appreciated. So keep up the good work. It's, you're, you're a neighbor of mine, and I just really value your involvement.
Great. Do you have more of your presentation, Gail, or is that?
Oh, you know, I can stop or start anytime. I was just going to say that the tick thing is significant, and Kevin, you might take a look at the, how to not get ticked by the, by nature in the website, you know, wear long pants, stay in the middle of the path, wear light colors. There's a number of things that you can do and use appropriate.
Yes. Well, actually, just to be clear, I mean, when I started running up on the trail up on King Mountain, the vegetation was not that great. But as the vegetation grew, that creates opportunities for ticks to propagate themselves and creates opportunities for them to hop on your thighs, which is what they did with me. So it's just, it's important for people to be thoughtful about that. I've stopped running out in those environments, but I'm still running. And just people need to be thoughtful about those risks.
Well, I think I see a hand in the audience. Is that someone who would like to ask a question of Gail, who is our representative to the Marin-Sonoma mosquito and vector control board? I see one hand, which is raised. Barbara Solomons. Barbara, do you have a question?
I have a question. Why, when you have all these people waiting to talk about the important issue of that statue, are you letting this woman drone on and on about mosquito abatement? What is the problem with the Larkspur City Council? This is my first appearance at the Larkspur City Council, and I am horrified. I am absolutely horrified. Four white male faces, and Catherine, Catherine, I like you. I've known you for a long time. I am just like, you are trying to scare people away so they won't come.
We're getting to it. I'm trying to get there as fast as possible. But we do have things that were already on the, that needed to be met on the agenda before this other issue came up, but we're getting right to it. So I'd like to thank you, Gail. I recognize that we have a lot of people who are interested in really getting to a very specific topic. I appreciate what you do with us, and thank you for that, and participating in such an awkward time right now.
Well, thank you for having me, and if anybody has any further questions, you can reach me through the city clerk. Okay.
Thank you, Gail.
That brings us to the approval of the consent calendar. Is there anyone from the city council who'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar. Anyone? And Vice Mayor Harof seconded. Allison, can we have a, Allison, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer.
It said yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. That brings us to the city manager's report. Hello.
Allison, I think I need you to do something to turn the video on. It's saying I can't do that.
I apologize for that.
There you are.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, to keep my update brief today, I wanted to note that fire season is upon us, and so Chief Martin from Centralman Fire has been preparing a lot of useful information for the community that we'll be posting on our website and distributing in our electronic newsletter. He's also been invited to make a full presentation to the council at your next meeting. And I just also wanted to thank Julian Skinner and the Public Works Department for the work they're doing on our pavement program. It's in full gear right now. You've probably seen us around town, working on streets, and we've actually had some chance to do other improvements. Folks who've been to Piper Park in the last two days have seen we have a new parking lot there. And we're also repairing the retaining wall at the city hall property, which will allow us to then pave Bright Lane. And I think I'll leave it at that, Madam Mayor, in the interest of time.
Thank you. Do we have any council member reports that are of urgent matter to bring up right now? Okay. Oh, Kevin, I mean, Gail, Paulson?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to say that the Chief Martin's report next week, we also have two new NRGs started. I really felt it's important just to mention that we're at the height of fire season, you know, approaching, and probably 16 fires in the state. So with everything going on and, you know, all our issues, we really are rapidly trying to do about 2,200 home inspections and vegetation inspections and evacuation routes and more to be disclosed, but I really felt that was important to get out there. Also, the Mobile Home Ad Hoc Committee, we're still trying to formulate a meeting for our next get-together. And thanks to our city clerk for trying to get masks and distribute them. He may have more to say about that later, so thank you.
All right. Thank you all. I know we've all been trying to do our work remotely, and I appreciate what all the council members are doing that way. We have one public hearing tonight, and this Larkspur resident has been waiting a long time to have this public hearing so that he can know what the status is of an issue on his property. Our public hearing tonight is to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 1050 amending the precise development plan regulating the Rose Garden subdivision for lot number 22, which is 65 Rose Lane of the Rose Garden Residential Development Plan. I think we'll have a staff report by building and planning director. And also, there was an errata sheet that was sent around by our city clerk about 5:00 o'clock tonight, for those of you who haven't seen it. Neil, you disappeared, but I think you're there. Would you like to start as the staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Way, and members of the city council. I will be brief. I know there's an audience here for another topic tonight. The matter before you in this public hearing is an amendment to the development standards for the Rose Garden subdivision, precise development plan. These amendments specifically affect lot 22, which is located at the southeast corner of the development. You can see it on this aerial that Allison has provided. And in the staff report and the attachments, you're seeing a lot of technical language and amendments to various exhibits and standards that make up the precise plan. And all this is really just to allow the property owner to realign his fence line along his east side property line of the lot. From its earliest inception, the development plan for this area included a 50-foot natural resource buffer from the top of the creek along the north-south stretch. This buffer was intended to enhance native vegetation and habitat and to restrict intrusion of humans and pets along the creek. However, during subsequent layout of the sites during the planning, certain lots were overlaying onto these buffers to a limited degree. There's similar 25-foot easement that affects the rear yards of several properties along the east-west stretch of the creek. However, all the other properties maintain a fairly uniform rear yard space, wherein this corner lot is unusually constrained by the corner configuration of the creek and the setback. Further, the model home for the site was designed in place without adequate consideration of this fence line. And since construction of the home was completed, the situation's been recognized as somewhat flawed condition, which the applicant is now requesting the city to correct. And we're doing this by adjusting these standards. In doing this, we have prepared an addendum to the original EIR, essentially determining the adjustment has a de minimis effect relative to plant species and habitat along the creek. So in conclusion, we recommend city council introduce and waive first reading of the ordinance 1050 tonight in order to permit the adjustments to the 50-foot setback. We would return with second reading at your next meeting. As you noted, there's an errata sheet to correct two typographical errors as well as add some language, clarifying language that the city attorney has recommended. I note the applicant. I believe he's available tonight. If the city council would like a presentation or to answer any questions that you have, I know he's simply available, so if you have any other issues, you can call on him. But I did not instruct him to necessarily present for the meeting.
Fine. Thank you, Neil. Are there questions from the city council members regarding the staff presentation? Yes, Scott Candell, please.
Is Scott at the meeting today?
Yes, he is.
So my question, my question is really for Scott. Is there any precedent that we're going to be setting if we make this exception for a future request similar to this? That all of a sudden, we're going to have to grant, you know, if we grant this, that we have to grant every request that is in the same ballpark as this, as, you know, you know, requesting a lot adjustment under similar circumstances?
No, I don't think so. This is a very fact-specific determination, primarily related to basically the way that the creek bends and the different setbacks. It has resulted in an odd configuration for this fence, as Neil just described. And since the circumstances are unique here, I don't believe this would set any precedent. Additionally, as noted in the staff report, the city council has already made one amendment for another project, and that also was a very fact-specific determination. So I think if there's any precedent, it's that the city council has looked at the unique circumstances of each request to modify the standards that are applicable to the subdivision and made a fact-based determination. And that would be the way that we would proceed for any other similar applications.
All right, thank you. And the other question I had is just for anyone on staff who goes qualified to answer it. Are there any structural issues with the creek? Any reason not to do this, that there's a potential environmental issue, any problems like that?
And I can answer that. I think while the area you see there looks fairly barren, and it's, that's fairly soon after construction, the the condition of that area is still fairly sparse relative to vegetation. There's a lot of native planting that's been done along the creek bank. And the creek actually takes a pretty wide swath of a turn, although the creek bank sort of joggles in and out. But we had, there's a biological analysis and there's no significant species in that kind of triangle where the fence was closed. And I do note, per Scott's response on the prior question, this is the only actual private property that runs right onto the 50-foot setback along the north-south stretch. So it is a very unique circumstance in that particular stretch of the creek and that particular setback.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Great. Are there further questions that the council has about this issue? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I can now open it up to the public. Mr. Howard is in the audience, I see. He doesn't need to speak, but if he would like to, I think he can come first. And then if there are others who want to speak to this specific issue about changing the lot line for Rose Lane Number 65.
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands at the moment, and it appears there's no public comment.
And I see one of our panelists raised his hand. That's Vice Mayor Haroff. So once we, we'll come back to that. Are there any emails that came in on this matter? As that's an opportunity people can use to comment also.
There have been no emails for this item.
Okay. So seeing no emails and no public comment on this particular item, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council. Kevin, did you have a question?
I did not have a question. I'd actually like to move the staff recommendation on this matter.
All right. And that is Ordinance 1050, including the errata sheet.
So it's, it's, I think the recommendation is that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of Ordinance 1050, amending ordinances, ordinance numbers 972 and 1004. So that would be my motion.
All right. Is there a second? Councilmember Candell seconded it. Allison, Neil, would you close down your share screen so that it's easier to see everybody? Thank you. So I think we need a roll call vote on this item, 7.1.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer? Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, can I make a quick comment just for Dan? We still can't hear you. I don't know if you want to call in on the phone line and talk on the phone. I mean, I hate for you not to be able to say anything for the whole meeting. That's what I do. I call in on the phone lines. I'm on the video for Zoom and on the phone is your number to call. I just, you know, hopefully it resolves. That's all.
Maybe he'll figure it out as we move on to the next thing. Thank you very much, Planning and Building Director Neil Toft. That brings us to business item number 8.1, which I think is what everybody is interested in talking about. And that is the status of the Sir Francis Drake statue and the next steps in considering its use. How this is going to go is we're going to hear a staff report from our city manager. And then we will have the council members be able to ask questions about that staff report and comments. And then we open this up for a public comment period of time. And then we return it to the city council for further discussion. I'd like to acknowledge that all of the public comments that have already come in by way of email have been posted on our city's website. And all of your comments as of 5:00 have already been sent to the existing city council members. And there are 39 that are on our website now. If you are in the audience and interested in viewing those, they're available for you to read at contemporary time. So let's begin with the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. On June 29th of this year, council held a special meeting to discuss the Sir Francis Drake statue at Larkspur Landing after having heard from members of the public that they had concerns about the statue and were requesting that the city discuss whether it should be removed or not. At the end of that meeting, staff was given direction to do some research about the logistics and legalities of removing the statue. And it was the council's intent through that direction that at a subsequent meeting, most likely this meeting, you engage in a discussion about the future of the statue with the statue being in its current site. Approximately two weeks ago, Central Marin Police became aware of posts on the internet calling for a protest to occur at the statue site last Thursday, June, I'm sorry, July 30th. And at that protest, it was the expressed intent of the protesters that the statue be toppled. That was the word used in the post. Central Marin staff and city staff discussed the situation. Adding to our concern is that we'd already had two acts of vandalism on the statue since your June 29th meeting. And we were increasingly concerned that, A, we would have some sort of violent, potential for violence and harm and injury both to protesters as well as to onlookers and/or our officers in the field. And additionally, we weren't certain that we could protect or preserve the statue if this protest event took place. At my request and direction, Public Works Director Julian Skinner arranged for the statue to be taken down temporarily and placed into storage, which has happened. That has changed the nature of your conversation slightly because whereas before, our intent was that this meeting would be to discuss whether the statue should remain in its site. Now it's slightly different in that you need to discuss whether to restore the statue at some future date to its site, place it in a different location, or consider donating it to some other owner for a different location. Additionally, we note that there is a different process occurring, being led by the county with the participation of four city jurisdictions to consider the legacy of Sir Francis Drake. And in particular, as it pertains to the use of that name on the boulevard that runs through, east-west through Mucha Marin County. And so you'll note in the staff report that, given the county-led effort is intended to explore that legacy and give us education about who Sir Francis Drake was and what the implications of his being in Marin are or are not, as well as an exploration of the history of indigenous people and how they were affected potentially by Sir Francis Drake. Staff thinks it might be advisable for the council to postpone making a decision about the ultimate disposition of the statue to allow that process to proceed. It will be, I think, a benefit to the council and the community to use those sessions that the county is leading to inform all of us. With that said, though, it is the council's prerogative to decide what it would like to do with the statue. Whatever decision you make, we recommend that we consult with the artist, which is consistent with the agreement when the art was commissioned and is the appropriate thing to do. With that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you and the council.
So do any members of the council have a question about that staff report? Scott, you can start us off.
Yeah, so my question is really, at our last meeting, we were talking about removing the statue. And the impression that I got was it was a huge deal. We needed permits and we had to figure out how much it was going to cost to remove it and preserve it. It was going to be much more expensive if we were going to preserve it. And then it seems like something happened and all of a sudden, under some Emergency Powers Act, we were able to remove it overnight and all those concerns disappeared. And I'm trying to understand, you know, this is my first, first year on the council, why we can't always, you know, move that swiftly? What, what happened that, is there some, some, how come it was no longer an issue? How come we didn't need permits anymore? And how come, you know, we were able to just do that so quickly? I was hoping you could just explain that.
So a couple of questions to unpack there. I think I'll start with the permit. We did, do need a permit. We had actually initiated the discussions with the regulatory body to obtain a permit. And we had actually put in the first part of the paperwork. The permit was going to cost the city $150. And because we did the work prior to getting the permit, the permit's going to cost us double. So it's going to cost us $300 because we didn't wait to receive the paperwork before we took the statue and removed it. So that, that is the, what we learned was the regulatory procedure we needed to go through. In terms of the action of removing the statue, I didn't mean to ever give the council the impression that we couldn't move the statue quickly if we needed to. We had been discussing how to do it logistically with our contractor and felt comfortable that we could do it quickly. In this particular case, rather than go through a legislative process, it is my responsibility, along with Chief Norton's, to consider the health and safety of the public, the health and safety of our police officers, and the protection of property. And for all three of those boxes, removing the statue was the alternative that we felt best served the public. And so we acted under executive authority because we felt that was necessary.
And please, by my question, don't take it to mean I'm second guessing your decision, because I'm not. And please don't take it to mean that, you know, I wanted us to remove the statue last time because I don't, I'm still looking forward to hearing everybody's, you know, input on this and discussing it. I was just curious, it just seemed the last time that it was going to be a long process. And then I blinked and the statue was down, and I was just trying to understand the way that all worked. So thank you for responding.
Dan, can you, some of the email questions have come in, and can you elaborate on what the alternative choices would have been for public safety? There's been some questioning as to why a fence, cyclone fencing wasn't put up or why we didn't have it staffed with security or CNPA officers to monitor any type of that potential vandalism that could happen. Why were those excluded as options?
Cyclone fencing is not a particularly secure type of fencing, and we felt pretty confident that it would end up either in the water or in Sir Francis Drake Boulevard if protesters were to come on scene en masse. And we didn't feel that erecting a more significant barrier was, one, going to actually deter people from scaling that barrier and still vandalizing the statue. And also, we would be reaching a point in terms of cost where it wasn't going to make as much sense to us either. And we weren't certain we could do that very quickly, given the location and having to go talk to different regulatory agencies. I don't know how much you want me to elaborate on my strong belief that physical altercations between American citizens choosing to protest and the police is not the first choice. As long as I'm the city manager, that's not the first choice. And I'm happy to own that. And I did not feel as appropriate to choose a path where we were going to put our officers in that type of confrontation, and we were going to have our officers in combat with people who were electing to protest. Whether I agree or disagree with the protesters and the methodology they've chosen isn't the point.
I appreciate that. Yeah. Are there other questions the council has on the city manager's report at this particular time? Dan Hilmer, or Kevin, you get started. And Dan, did you get your audio straightened out?
I think so, Madam Mayor.
Why don't we let Dan Hilmer start since his audio is straightened out?
Yeah.
I just have a quick question for Scott Woodruff. We received a letter dated August the 4th from Linda Joy Catwinkle, who states that she is the intellectual property counsel to the artist Dennis Patton. And I would like Scott's reading and analysis of that letter briefly.
And before I stretch that out.
I would also say that she states here that she, that this is related to, in her words, the sculpture currently known as Sir Francis Drake.
And I'll just refer everyone in the audience that that is one of the public comments that is already posted. If you wanted to read along, it's about halfway down. It's Catwinkle, and there's a parentheses OWE. That's the name of the law firm. So go ahead, Scott. Sorry to interrupt you there.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. So my brief summary of the letter is that it expresses the view of some unnamed residents of Marin County, as well as the artist, that the city does not have the unilateral authority to destroy the statue. It did not take issue with the relocation of it to secure it in the face of the potential threats to it that the city manager described, but did say that the city council doesn't have, and the city doesn't have the authority to unilaterally destroy it. There is a process in state law that deals with, you know, the alteration or destruction of art that meets certain qualifications. There are also provisions of the agreement that the city entered into with the artist at the time of the purchase that would address the potential destruction or alteration of the art. That was, I believe that part of the issue was that the last time this was on the city council's agenda, there was brief discussion of potential destruction of the sculpture if there were no other means of disposing of it, if the city council wanted to dispose of it. But the implication was never intended that the city would not follow the law or comply with the terms of the agreement with the artist, which of course we would.
And in the removal process, there's, the statue was, well, it had been vandalized twice before, but in the removal process, the statue came down relatively intact. Is that right? Yeah. So that...
Yes, Madam Mayor. We had to remove the feet of the statue in order to be able to preserve it. But other than that, no other modifications were made, and that's a repairable matter.
Kevin, you had a question?
Not so much a question, but just a couple of comments. Dan mentioned about the regulatory engagement that had to occur. And I just want to make sure people knew the agency that was primarily responsible for engaging with us, which I think we did. And that was the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, which is often referred to as BCDC. And so that was a process that was already underway, and I think they've been fully informed about what was going on. The other thing I wanted to clarify, though, was that although I very much appreciate our city manager's proactive engagement in this process, it wasn't unilateral. I mean, we had, as a city council, we were informed and had an opportunity to express our views about what was happening. I certainly expressed my views and supported the decision that was made with the expectation that we would be having an ongoing conversation, which we are having. that we would be having an ongoing conversation, which we're having tonight. But the public safety aspects of the decision that was made was, to me, paramount. And I cannot be more grateful than the way in which we proceeded in this matter. That's it.
Dan, George, you had something?
I just want to make sure that Vice Mayor Haras' comments are not misunderstood. Each council member was briefed individually about what was happening. There wasn't a, there was no group meeting where you were able to
Yes, no. Correct. And I'm sorry if I didn't want to give that impression, but I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that we were aware of what was going and we had the opportunity to express our personal views.
And Dan, could you also make sure to clarify, and I tried to do this earlier in the public comment, that there are multiple conversations happening now in Marin and multiple organized meetings to discuss the legacy or the history or the name of Sir Francis Drake? We are not guiding that conversation that's happening on the countywide level about the renaming of the Boulevard. That's being guided by Supervisor Rice and Rodoni, excuse me. And they are the ones who are initiating, the speakers and the historians and the native peoples who are presenting, not us. Is that correct?
I can only say that I have not been involved with that part of the process. The four city managers and the county administrator will be taking a lead position in conversations in future sessions that, as we get more into the minutia of process. But I would need to ask the county who selected the speakers.
But we didn't have a process. And I just want to make sure everybody listening knows that we didn't make the choice as to who was going to be speaking or not. That's not the role that this group has. All right. Are there any further questions before we get going? I do have a copy of the social media posts that share it far and wide. The statue is massive and will need several hundred people to topple. So I think that that alert was a very important part of how, what guided our emergent conversation about emergent movement on this. So before we get started, I would like to recommend that we have a three-minute timer. I would also like to say that we have received 39 written comments by, and I'll read who those people's names are. You are welcome to, in the audience, speak again, but just recognize that your comment has seen the public, has been already read by us and is in the public realm right now. So we have public comments from Mustrossi, from Gold, from Gouldman T. and Gouldman S., McQuade, from Lundstrom, Bradford, Hensel, Arless, Stately, Matheson, River, Peterson, Mo, Catwinkle, which is the law firm we discussed, Newmeyer, Gruber, Swer, pardon me for pronouncing names wrong, Swerengen, Meltner, Lubberski, Wilson, Lee, Hartzell, Brown, Van Deitenbeck, Winter, Kirkerson, Chu, Hibberstites, Goodwin, Sites, Axworthy, Beck, Sinnet, Borden, Varan, Pritchard, and Bryant. So recognize that your public comment is here and you're welcome to speak again, but you know that you've been recorded. I've also had a special request from our previous council member, Joan Lundstrom, who spoke with the artist today and asked him to speak tonight, and he declined, but did issue a statement that she would like to read. And we will get to that. So please, oh, Scott? Yes?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know in the past, when we had a large number of people who wanted to speak, we eliminated it to two minutes as opposed to three minutes. I didn't know if council was interested in doing that tonight.
Looks like we have a dozen or so people. Council, are you interested in a two-minute or a three-minute public comment time? Why don't we keep it at three and see how it goes? All right. So how this works on Zoom is everyone who's interested in making a public comment, raise your hand and it's sort of, we go down the list. If you are interested in sending in an email comment during public comment time and not speaking, the instructions for doing that are available on the city website. I'd also just like, before we start this discussion, to acknowledge that many of you in the audience are profoundly disappointed. And many of you in the audience think this shouldn't have, this should have been done quicker. So I know we're in a polarized position right now. I just want us all to recognize that we're community members here and that we all live here and care about our community. And this council is trying to make the best and most reasonable decisions it can under the circumstances that we find ourselves in right now. Not only with the COVID-19, but with the dramatic and transitional social change that's happening in our country. So let's see who would like to speak first. It looks like, Allison, I'll let you just sort of introduce them and let them into our virtual room.
Thank you. Our first public comment will be from Cindy Winter. Cindy, it's your turn.
Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I will be brief. I know that Joe Lundstrom has been working practically nonstop, conferring in person with a great many people. And it appears to me that we may be on the verge of a solution to this dispute. A solution where all people in Larkspur with different points of view will feel that they have been heard and that their concerns have been incorporated. I support fully her further efforts and hope with all my heart that they will succeed. I hope this council in its entirety will now have confidence in keeping the statue as a bridge to explaining and reconciling differing points of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Our next
Go ahead.
Our next public comment will be from Kathy Hartzell.
Welcome, Kathy.
Hi.
Hi, welcome, Kathy.
Hello. I am speaking to you as a past mayor of Larkspur and a 36-year, well, actually 40-year resident because prior to living there and being, raising my family, I was on the planning commission and lived in the city of Larkspur as well then, obviously. I would simply like to also support the recommendations, comments, and wisdom of my longtime mentor, Joan Lundstrom. I would like to say that I'm pleased with the somber nature of this discussion tonight that we've heard so far. And that makes me pleased with the council's outlook on what we're addressing. I think that we need to give time to the discussion and separate it from the Sir Francis Drake discussion of the Boulevard and so forth. And I think that it would be helpful if we stopped referring to the statue or the sculpture as anything other than the artwork commissioned and created by Dennis Patton to honor the beauty and glory of the Marin County setting, which is what, in fact, we have heard said about him looking at it from that same vantage point and saying, can you imagine being the first person to really look at this area from here and what you might have thought? So please listen to the others and support my colleagues as I have asked, and I will give the rest of my time away. Thank you.
Kathy.
Our next commenter will be Joan Lundstrom.
Welcome, Joan. You're off mute now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I spoke at length with Dennis Patton and he declined to speak because he said, quote, "He's an old man and I've worked hard all my life and I didn't want to fight." So I said, may I just repeat his words? So here are what I wrote down verbatim from what he said in his words. Very interesting because I had anticipated he would be very, very upset about what is happening. But he was, he was much more philosophical. So here's what he said. He's still upset. Quote, "People are misinterpreting my work. The sculpture was never a portrait of Sir Francis Drake. He was a short, dumpy Englishman, a biscuit eater. It was an event sailing around the world. My sculpture enjoyed by many until someone decided Sir Francis Drake was bad. Sir Francis Drake was an SOB, who wasn't? Now hatred brought my statue down. Hatred is driving people today. My lovely sculpture was built out of love for Marin. This hurt me terribly, hurt my heart. No one asked me, they just decided to hate it. This is a gift to the city at a wonderful time of art and music. Janus Joplin and the Dead lived in the Larkspur Canyon. There was electricity, a happy time. Change the name and get rid of the hatred. This sculpture should go back up in the same place with a story on the plaque of why it was taken down. We can't change the past. Let's learn from it. Turn it into a teaching tool. It should never go back anywhere else, even in a different name. I want people to support the art, not the artist. It's about art," unquote. And for the record, I met Dennis in 1977, his 34th birthday party at the western town he built over in Larkspur Landing. So I would thoroughly support the staff recommendation that take the time, discuss what should happen, and find a way, a creative way, to make this come together and also involve the artist. Because we have this statue up for 30 years, and in all those 30 years, we never had one protest. Remember that. It's been part of our community and now we have protests. So let's figure out a creative way to have it bring people together.
Thank you, Joan.
Our next public comment will be from Barbara Solomon. Barbara, you can unmute yourself for public comment.
Hi, Barbara. Welcome back.
I didn't elect to speak. I'll just say something. I'm an artist myself. And the idea that you would get rid of incredible art, a sculpture, or something that somebody put all their thoughts and creative energy into just because somebody like Robbie Paulson thinks he's like a local, like, person who needs to like change things in Larkspur? No. You guys need to really think about what you're doing. I mean, it's not right. This statue should stay. It's not, it's not Drake. It's Don Quixote. Let's like, let's keep it for itself. Move it to another location if you need to, but keep it. I mean, there, that's what the majority of people in Larkspur want to happen. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Barbara.
I know.
Yes, go ahead, Allison.
Our next public comment will be from Patricia Rabazio. Patricia, you may unmute yourself for public comment.
Hi, Pat. Hi. Hi, everybody. I looked through all of the public comments that came in, and the one that really stuck with me was from the Staley's, who say they live in Corder Madera, back when the dedication happened in 1990. And I remember that that is the year that Bob and I moved here. And my memory was not as good as hers, but I remember the statue going up and how amazingly beautiful it was. And I thought at the time, it was dedicated to Don Quixote. So I think we need to immediately withdraw from being part of this discussion about Sir Francis Drake. I think we need to do a little research to find out how it got rededicated to Sir Francis Drake. I know the artist's son in the video, which I hope all of you have watched. If you have not seen the 17-minute video about Dennis Patton and how his work, his biracial work of integrated people running through the airport in Kansas City carrying luggage, whites and blacks holding hands with their arms around each other. This artist is not racist. And the fact that it was originally donated or dedicated to Don Quixote and then somehow became tied to Sir Francis Drake, maybe it's just because it was on that Boulevard. And so people assumed that because he was standing on that Boulevard, it was Sir Francis Drake. I think the council has a major public relations job ahead of letting Marin County and all of the Bay Area know that the artist who originally created this sculpture says it was in the vein, quote, "of the much-loved wooden Don Quixote statue that he had built earlier." And he built that Don Quixote statue because he wanted to make people laugh. And he wanted to make people realize that things were beautiful and bigger and better than they ever thought. And he was inspired by Robin Williams. It was his three-month friendship with Robin Williams that caused him to decide that he wanted to entertain people for the rest of his life. And that Don Quixote statue that he built in Marin County is what put him on the world stage. He actually received notoriety throughout America. And that is one reason why a photograph of his very biracial work from Kansas City is now in the Smithsonian Institution. So I think Larkspur has a great responsibility here to not only protect this sculpture, but to set right the misperceptions of its, of its, of its meaning and its, and its origination. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pat.
Our next public comment will be from Doug Childers. Doug, it's your turn for public comment.
Welcome, Doug.
Thank you very much. First, I just want to thank all of you for entering into public service in good faith. I appreciate y'all being there and doing what you're doing. And personally, it means absolutely nothing what your gender, race, et cetera, are. If you're doing good works, that's the bottom line. And I just remembered that it is about, it is a Don Quixote statue. I haven't seen it in years. I used to go walk down there and then all this thing saying it was Sir Francis Drake. I don't know how that happened because it's clearly, I've never read Don Quixote. And if you think that it's, that's just surprised me. I forgot about that. So I'm just going to read very quickly because I think this is tied to some larger issues. Local activists want to knock down statues, change street and school names, and change the narrative in Marin County. We're told this is just the beginning, that we must also defund local police departments and end police violence. I absolutely oppose police violence. I oppose racism. I oppose defunding local police departments. I oppose self-appointed, unelected individuals tearing down statues on their own authority. Every statue toppled without consulting the wider community and without the consensus of the wider community topples local democracy and disenfranchises the wider local community. Self-appointed, unelected individuals presuming to know better than the rest of us, telling us what we should all do, is extremely problematic. In cities across America, self-appointed, unelected individuals gather to impose their ideological wills on their communities without consulting their communities. They tear down statues and deface and destroy public property and independent businesses, often in low-income neighborhoods. They've attacked and injured police and ordinary citizens passing by. Thirty people have died in these so-called peaceful protests. What have these protesters built? As far as I know, nothing. Destruction of public and private property and the suffering and hardship their actions inflict on ordinary citizens and local communities is their contribution so far. They claim their actions are aimed at stopping racism, but this does nothing to stop racism. As for defunding local police departments, I've lived in Marin County since 1988. Marin is not perfect. The police are not perfect. They are not monsters. They are not symbols to be toppled. Whatever their shortcomings, the police serve a vital role in our community. We should not sacrifice them or our statues on the altar of a radical ideology. Minneapolis, Seattle, where my mother and brother live, Portland, where my sister-in-law's parents live, New York City, where I have friends, and other US cities have dramatically restricted their police. As a result, crime and murders have skyrocketed in many cities. On July 28th, after the city council voted to defund the Minneapolis police, the police released the following statement to its citizens. Attention, 3rd Precinct Residence, July 28, 2020. Robberies and carjackings have increased in our precinct. Cell phones, purses, and vehicles are being targeted. Some victims have been maced, dragged, assaulted, and some threatened with a gun. Most of these crimes have occurred north of 42nd Street East. 100 robberies and 20 carjackings have been reported to the 3rd Precinct, Police Precinct in July alone. Downtown
Let's wrap it up a little bit. We're
Yeah, I'll wrap it up.
And I know your comment was
Oh, you didn't mention, you didn't mention my name, so I didn't know that my comment had received.
Oh, I
I'll just end with this. It starts with toppling statues and graduates to defunding the police and dramatic violence. the police and dramatic crime increase. Where will it end? I would rather not find out. Anything we do must be done by consensus democratically. That's my bottom line.
Terrific. And that's being recorded now as a public comment. So thank you for that. Brings us to, is this our next person, Lee Dines? Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Um, you know, I wrote some ideas down, but I'm just going to talk to you guys like a human being.
Great.
Um, I've lived in Larksburg for eight years. We live in the Blue Rock. We're both musicians. We're artists. And I'm actually originally from the state of Ohio. I grew up about an hour and a half from the Boardy of Kentucky. And I know what racism looks like. I know what conservatism looks like. And I also know that Marin County prides itself on being this, like, really liberal, progressive place. And I sit here and I listen to these comments, and I listen to your guys' deliberation about $350 for some form, and I listen to you talk about exploring the legacy of Sir Francis Drake. It's, it's worse than where I'm from. George Bush came to my high school, George W. Bush, talked about suiciders. He came to my high school, he gave a presentation in my auditorium, and the powers that be named the road to my high school after George W. Bush. And I want you guys to know that you are no better than where I'm from in middle America. The, the fact that, the fact that you can sit there and listen to all of these folks talk about how not racist it is, and how you can talk, sit there and listen to, oh yeah, we need to deliberate, we need to explore the legacy. It's going to be hard to take it down. It's going to take time. Well, you did it. You took it down. Leave it down. Yeah, maybe, maybe it wasn't originally Sir Francis Drake. That's actually really interesting to learn, but you know what? It's clearly someone conquering something. And it's clearly caused a lot of animosity. It's the first thing you see when you come over the bridge. And all of my black musician friends are not comfortable coming to Marin. I can tell you that much. And there is no such thing as not racist. There is only racist, and there is anti-racist. Do the anti-racist thing. There's a great book called How to Be an Anti-Racist. Read it. Do the anti-racist thing. Show people that you care. I know that you spend $5 million a year on your police force. I'm not going to sit here and ask you to not do that. But take a baby step. Do the anti-racist thing. And if I created a long-form piece like I'm working on right now, and someone told me that it makes them feel uncomfortable because it seems racist, I would tear it up in a heartbeat. Okay? So the artist is going to live, and all artists know that they need to be more attached to the process than they are to the product. Okay?
Thank you, Dines.
Uh, my time's not done yet.
Oh, getting there.
Yeah. So I would really appreciate it if you listened.
Thank you very much.
Our next public comment will be Clara. Clara, you may unmute yourself for public comment.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, my name's Clara. I'm a former resident of Marin. I went to Redwood, and I've driven by the statue of Sir Francis Drake at least 100 times. So that whole time, I and everyone I know was under the impression that its subject was Sir Francis Drake, as are plenty of those who wrote in. Artist Dennis Patton's claim is never a statue of Drake. People tonight have claimed it was Don Quixote. If that's the case, it's been a massive failure in communication on the part of the city. Review. There's a statue placed on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, featuring someone with a sword, armor, helmet, and flag, symbols associated with conquerors, not Quixote. It is the general mistaken belief that Marin County was a landing spot for Drake. Even on this agenda and elsewhere in official documentation, the city of Larksburg refers to it as "a statue of Sir Francis Drake." Dennis Patton, on his very own website, has the statue titled as "Sir Francis Drake." He's named it as such in past interviews. Now he claims it embodies a historical event of a Western European British citizen who circumnavigated the world, bringing a flag to the shores of Marin County, which, I gotta say, sure sounds like a roundabout way to describe Drake. It's disingenuous for people to pretend that this is all as an abstract representation of Quixote, when this is, the artist has said no such thing. I know it's the go-to accusation for those unwilling to engage with deeper issues, but it is not quote-unquote cancel culture for the people you represent to raise concerns. But this prominent statue, one of the first things people see when approaching Larksburg, has become associated with legacies that we are actively trying to grow from. These are the people who elected you. Out of not hatred, that is compassion. Nobody is claiming the artist was racist. Nobody is attacking him as a person in any way, shape, or form. This is about a specific work of art that the government of Larksburg has chosen to highlight. Why are these protests happening now and everyone's been fine? Because we are in the midst of a national reckoning. Because of people like the earlier caller with fear-mongering dog whistles about riots and lawlessness that will destroy the city you love. The statue in its current form is a statue celebrating a pirate, one who led many slave-trading excursions throughout his life, who assisted in the massacre in which 400 civilians were killed, who may have spared the Coast Miwok but slaughtered other indigenous peoples around the world. That statue should not return. That man does not deserve a recognition of the city of Larksburg, a city whose ideals supposedly run counter to that. I think everyone on this call knows that the city isn't going to destroy a work of art. That's not in danger. But please, donate it to a museum or return it to the artist. Or, the compromise, reinstate it with placards denoting it as "Don Quixote." Listen to your constituents, who know there are so many more figures in history worthy of public distinction, many of whom actually call this land home. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara.
Our next public comment will be for caller ending in 1402.
James Holmes, Larksburg. Taking down the Patton sculpture in the dead of night was wrong for two reasons. It surrendered to threats, and it preempted a public decision-making process. The anti-art anarchists threatened violence precisely because they knew they were steadily losing local public support. In response, Larksburg used public safety as a pretext to reward aggression. Please undo this damage. Listen to the Larksburg community, not the woke community, as IJ columnist Spotswood calls it. The two communities are not the same when it comes to censoring or destroying public art. Council members, please support art and artists, defend democracy, resist intimidation, bullying, and fanaticism, and restore the sculpture to a rightful place of honor in Larksburg. And in so doing, restore Larksburg's honor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Our next public comment will be from Rosa Thomas. Rosa, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you. My name is, of course, Rosa Thomas. I live in Corder Madera. For reference, because you can't see me, I will tell you that I am a black person. I've lived here for 27 years. And I have kind of a, maybe to some, a surprising perspective on this. There are 955 streets named MLK Way in this country. And Mexican people were here long enough to name everything in California. But still, we are faced with problems of bigotry and, you know, racism. So I think that, that, you know, like, they say, what's in a name, right? I think that people go for the easy, big thing. Let's make this big demonstrative statement. Let's take down statues. Let's, you know, let's change the words and names that Marin Joe's, or sorry, not Marin Joe's, Trader Joe's gives its products. But that's a big demonstrative, big old flashy thing to do. A hard thing to do is to make actual social change. And so what annoys me is when people try to win at the woke Olympics, which I call it, where people try to just be so like, man, I feel for you so hard, and I'm gonna, no, it's going to take a lot of work. For women's suffrage, they started that fight before the Civil War, and they didn't get suffrage until the 1920s. It's hard work. It's not some big flashy comment or big flashy demonstrative thing that you do. And so if you really want to help, and you really want to fight the injustices in America, work for it. Don't just try, because, believe me, bringing, like I said, 955 streets named MLK Way, and we still have what happened to George Floyd. So what I want to say is, I love that statue. I drove, I drive to work by it every day for the last 11 years, and I always smiled at it. And when I was driving down that road the other day, I didn't know it had been taken down, and I saw it had been taken down, it brought a tear to my eye. Because the artist must never apologize. My children are artists, and that's what I tell them. That's what I tell, and what I look for in artists, is that if you don't like the art you see, you go out and make different art, but you do not low-rate other people's art. So I just think that you should use this as a teaching moment if you want to explain to people who Sir Francis Drake was, and now we know that it wasn't, it was actually Don Quixote that he was portraying, do that. But the art must live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Our next public comment will be from Stephanie Greater. Stephanie, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Stephanie. I grew up in Marin County. I'm a professor of anthropology, including, I teach online American studies, including, including the history of colonialism. And I wasn't actually planning on talking in this meeting, because I felt like enough had been said to explain to the public why a man who traded, who transported, kidnapped, transported, and enslaved African people, who killed many indigenous people, who, who raped and took women aboard his ships as sex slaves, who abandoned his own crew, and, and even killed 300 people in Scotland, if you need to be more concerned with white people being killed than people of color. But it's just, it's so upsetting, as the other speaker said earlier, to hear people make all of these excuses for why the statue should be reinstated. I'm the daughter of multiple artists. I have the deepest respect for art. But as the other speaker said, the artist needs to be able to accept that their work affects publics at different moments in different ways, and that our attachment to any certain aesthetic art piece needs to, in some ways, understand that it will take on different meanings as society grows and changes. The reality is, whether you want to call it Don Quixote, or you want to call it Sir Francis Drake, that statue at the gate, at the maritime gateway of Marin hovering over everyone who passes it, is a representation of European male colonialism, the domination of the United States by European colonists, and their genocide of indigenous people, as well as enslavement of African people. There's no way to take away that meaning. And so if people like the aesthetics of that statue, and as someone who grew up with artists, I can recognize the deep skill that went into creating that statue, please put it on a private property, so those who want to appreciate that can see it. But to have that be in the public space to remind everyone, as that first speaker, speaker, the former council member said, who believed that, what would it be like for someone to first come and see this world for the first time? Well, that's the very problem with that statue existing. There were indigenous people here for thousands and thousands of years. He was not the first person to see this land. He was, represents, some of the first people who saw this land did not see indigenous people as fully human, and decided to claim it for England, Spain, Europe, and led to the violent process of colonization that has led to this very unequal world that we live in today. So I am so, I'm clearly very upset about all of the apologies that people are making for keeping this in, in place. It is a representation of horrific violence that continues to this day. And it, it will be very telling if the statue gets reinstated about the values that Marin cares about, an artist and his aesthetic over the death of millions of people. So that's all. Thank you. Sorry for being kind of upset.
That's all right. This is a very polarizing time in our country. I appreciate that you dialed in to tell us your opinion. Um, do we have another speaker? It looks like Julia is next.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, Julia, would you, could you give us your last name for the record?
Yeah, Daniel.
Daniel. I should have been asking people that earlier. It just helps in our public record comments. Go ahead, Julia.
Sure. Thanks. So I dialed in to the last meeting as well, and I really appreciated the conversation there, which was, I think, of a pretty different flavor than this one is. So I wanted to start by clarifying one thing, which is that during the last conversation on June 29, I was curious, we were also fighting about Francis Drake or Don Quixote. Dennis Patton's website referred to the statue as Sir Francis Drake. I have the screenshot on my computer, but I don't really think that matters, because regardless, the imagery celebrates colonialism, you know, sword, flag, conquering. It's pretty clear. And so I think there's, I really do respect kind of the desire and the concern to not be seen as capitulating to threats of damage to public property. But I think that the integrity of this conversation and the meeting earlier this summer do show that the council's handling of this matter is very thoughtful and is not reactionary. And I think that the interests of public safety and the interests of what happens long-term are two different conversations, and that that action won't necessarily mean capitulating to a broader dynamic that happened or a threat that happened. And so I think, just reviewing the sort of, the document that the city manager produced, respectfully, I think that the decision, the recommendation to defer decision-making kind of skirts the issue. And as the school year starts, I think we need to be thinking now about the stories that we're telling our children about our history. I grew up, I'm white. I grew up in Marin. I spent my whole education up until college in the Marin Public School System. And the story that I learned there was that native people don't exist anymore, and they kind of magically disappeared. And so I'm really asking for the sake of white children a few years after me in school, which is not, I think, the most important voice in this conversation, but is the one that I represent, that we change the stories that we tell in Marin. And I think this is part of that. We don't need to glorify colonialism and settlers and missions and genocide anymore. We can talk about those, and we can learn from them, while also removing giant statues from the public view. That's really sustainable social change, understanding our history, talking about whiteness in Marin, learning from our history and working on healing long-term. And that involves the next generation. And I understand that Dennis Patton put great care into his work. My goal isn't to invalidate that. But now it's a public object, and so it's up to the public and to see how they interpret it. And I also finally just want to highlight that we heard from Lucina earlier, who is a Coast Miwok member of this conversation, and clearly there's a lot of pain here. And I think a lot of the people dialing in angrily saying, like, talking about the destruction of society are not recognizing or respecting that. And I think I want to end highlighting that.
Thank you, Julia.
Hi, Dan.
Uh, yes, I don't see who's next. Yavar?
Our next public comment will be Yavar A.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Yavar. I'm a community organizer here in the county.
Hi, Yavar.
Can you hear me clearly? Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. So I'll try to keep it brief. I just want to say, I understand you guys put temporary on the removal to give some kind of political cover to this council, because there would be a backlash from your constituents. I just want to make it permanent for you all right now, that that statue is not going back up in your city. That statue is removed permanently, decided by the people. In solidarity with the Coast Miwok people, we are standing, sitting, breathing the air, the land of the Coast Miwok for 10 millennia. This was theirs for 10 millennia. It is still theirs. They are still amongst us, and we must defer to them. We will defer to them, and we are deferring to them. We showed you that in our actions, and we have shown you that now by removing the Drake name from the school. And slowly but surely, the Drake name will be removed from the whole county, and then the final one will be Drake's Bay. So if anyone here is under any illusions, I just came to, you know, put an end to all of that now. I appreciate the time, and I'll continue talking now about the idea of political cover. That we, the people who are being referred to by all kinds of names and things of that nature, have done you all a great favor. We have allowed you all to-- We have allowed you all to remove the statue and blame it on us, the people, the community, whatever labels they want to call about the youth. This is Generation Z. So when people say these names about Generation Z, they must know that these are going to be the people inheriting the houses, getting the money, living in Marin. This is the next generation of Marin County that they're all referring to like this. So I hope that people are clear on the council. The people that are being berated by your constituents are the ones that will be. Your constituents shortly will be turning 18, will be voting. And the people that are against the Drake name are the exact population and group that is slowly but surely watching their grip on society loosen before their eyes, and they don't know what to do about it. They're, they're in scramble mode and desperation mode. First, oh, well, what if it was just any colonizer? Or what if it's Don Quixote? What if it's my Uncle Bob? We don't want a statue that glamorizes the violent colonization of indigenous land, the violence perpetrated against Black and Brown people across the world. And even if that was a nameless statue, we would be calling for its removal. I appreciate your time, and I hope that just, if I could make sure that any point got across, it is the point that that is a permanent removal. We understand that your use of the word temporary was just for political cover. So we are right now confirming the permanence of the removal of the Drake statue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public comment will be from Emerson Brown.
Go ahead, Emerson.
Good, you can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm not going to reiterate the reasons why taking the statue down was a good reason. It's a, it's a slave trader and a symbol of supremacy and colonialism. I do want to address some of the counterclaims from the people who oppose this decision, and just kind of pick apart some of the logic and reasoning here. So here are some of the claims I'm hearing, and I'm going to answer each one of them. First claim that I hear is Drake was a person of his time, so we shouldn't tarnish his legacy because of one part of his life, because he did so many good things. Okay, just a reminder, Sir Francis Drake was a founding father of the British slave trade. Exactly zero English people traded slaves across the Atlantic before him. So he wasn't following a trend. He literally started that trend. And we know that that trend led to the rise of Western imperialism, capitalism, and the disenfranchisement of an entire diaspora in the world we live in today. So definitely started a trend. Second claim that I'm hearing is, well, we shouldn't focus on this due because it's a small issue, and there's other issues to focus on. And, you know, why are we spending our time on this? Well, the statue is down, and that was easy. The only thing that's causing us to spend more time on this is the people who oppose the issue, who, by the way, aren't actually saying why they want to keep the statue up. They're just saying they didn't like the decision. They're saying that for my third claim, it wasn't a democratic process. They believe that there's somehow democracy being ruined here because of this decision. Just a reminder to everyone who thinks that we live in a society where we call it a democracy. This is not ancient Athens. Citizens don't vote on every issue. The representatives that people voted for made this decision, and that's how the society we live in works. So I think there's some confusion on what democracy means. We're not a true democracy. This is not 300 B.C. in Greece. And then the last claim that I hear is that we're canceling history. Last time I checked, you can still search Wikipedia. You can still read Drake in a history or a biography. Nothing's being burned. We're just removing a statue. We're removing a name. And in fact, I think more people have learned history these last few months than the last 70 years. I think more people are aware of history now than ever. So I would go so far to say that we're not canceling history. We're actually teaching history for the first time, because a lot of people are learning more about Drake for the first time. No history is being canceled. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Allison, before we go to the next speaker, could you check if we were giving equal time to the email in comments? Have there been any emailed in comments?
Thank you. We have two emailed in comments, if you'd like me to read those at this time.
Have they already been previously submitted?
One is a new email comment.
Okay.
And the other is as well, a new email comment.
All right. Are they long, or can you, can we do them in three minutes?
I believe I can get through these in three minutes. I will start with the first from Veronica Wilson. Hello, City Manager Schwartz and Larkspur City Council. I would like to request that the removal of Sir Francis Drake's statue remain permanent. I applaud the city for taking it down, but do not support the rationale provided, which was entirely about safety concerns related to rumored removal of statue by civilians. The true matter of safety that our local government should be concerned with is that of BIPOC residents in Marin. The Drake statue, as you all now well know, is a triggering and harmful symbol that does not represent inclusivity nor equity. On the contrary, it sends a message that this county does not equally value the lives and experiences of Black, Latinx, and Native people. The statue is now down. Regardless of your stated motives for taking it down, you've taken a step and ripped off a proverbial Band-Aid. This is but a first step, but an important one nonetheless. Turning back now would be an incredible setback with no value. The statue should not go back up ever. This is a movement to go forward. I urge you to use this momentum, keep the statue out of our public space, and let's move on to other pressing issues that will begin to shift the tides of equity in Marin. Best, Veronica Wilson of Mill Valley, California.
So we have one, one more emailed in comment, and then we'll return to our audience with their hands up. I need to give equal time to those who can't get into our Zoom meeting, but can send in an email comment.
This next email comment comes in from Georgia DeBecque. Just the question, what was the cost of removal, and what is the cost of storage? That is the end of the comment.
Okay, we'll get to that when we get to our discussion. Thank you. And I see, next up is Serena Campbell. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Serena Campbell, and I've been a resident in Fairfax my whole life. And I just wanted to say, I think you guys should all be clearly looking at who is saying this statue is offensive, and who is trying to uphold some legacy. Because clearly, the people who are uncomfortable by this statue are the people who have been boxed out of the town of Larkspur and as a whole Marin for decades. And who knows how long. And I think art can be supported without it being racist. And I think this is a good opportunity to have some anti-racist art being put into the town of Larkspur. I also wanted to say that having a statue celebrating colonialism right next to a prison with many sufferers of the prison industrial complex, and probably some of the highest concentration of BIPOC in Marin, sends a clear message about their place in Marin that is way overdue to be changed. So making your town a welcoming place and promoting diversity in a predominantly white place by taking this down is a great step to make a commitment as a town to become actively anti-racist. And it's, it's far overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Looks like Mr. Martinez is next.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right. So my, you know, if, when people say, that looks like a duck, talks like a dog, walks, walks like a duck, it's not a wolf, it's not a dinosaur, it's a duck. So if people are telling you that statue is racist, what else do you need to hear? People out there, they were trying to take down the statue physically. Think about that already, how scary that is, that they have to go and put themselves out there to do your job. Why is it that us people of color have to be looking at this guy who raped, killed all, all these people from this land, was a slave trader, and we have to idolize them? That, you guys should be ashamed of yourself. This, Larkspur should be, should have taken them down, down seven, 100 years, whenever the hell this statue came. It's, it blows my mind that there is people defending it. Like, it's, it's, it's only like, for the benefit of you guys, for people, for white people, not us, or people of color. What, isn't it interesting that it's next to a prison? Isn't it interesting that if you drive to five minutes, it's next to the canal? I don't want to put that legacy, I don't want to put that on my kids. I don't want them to say, hey, look at this, that guy raped, killed, and fucked us all left and right. I hope that that clicks in your head. If you want to put it somewhere else, sure, the artist can shove it up his ass, he can do whatever the hell he wants with it.
Okay.
And here's the thing, I am angry.
I know you are.
And I'm gonna, and that's what I'm saying. So do not come out here making me seem like I can't say even that, when our people have been getting killed, all right? And then, and I go back, okay? So if people are out there trying to do it violently, they're trying to take it down, think of how scared they are, and how they have to go to those knees to take it down. So again, as a statue goes back up, that's just a middle finger to my people and to people of color, okay? So take a little walk, all right? Get to know the people. But the interesting part is, in Larkspur, there's only white people. Let that sink in already, okay? So again, to me, it's a waste of time that I'm out here at eight o'clock, being a broke college student over here, trying to get my voice out there. But I'm not going to stop, and stop, and the people started starting to calling us woke. We're not woke. We're just people that have been getting raped and killed all this time, and we're tired and angry about it. So I'm done, and hello.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I appreciate that you gave the time to attend tonight. Georgia Janet Beck, you did have a, an email sent in. Do you have something else you were wanting to bring up?
I just wanted to say, first of all, how sad I was to learn that the city of Larkspur were forced to take down the sculpture at Larkspur Landing. The sculpture brought me and so many people I know so much pleasure. At a time when joy is in such short supply, it was a particularly painful blow to have this thing of beauty taken away. I urge the council to please slow this process down. First and foremost, so that you can fully and accurately determine the wishes and concerns of your constituents. Second, to allow for a thorough and thoughtful review and analysis of all points of view, guided by input from artists and art educators as well as historians. The issues you are dealing with are complex, involving the intersection of history, and how we report history, the role of public art, and the demands for social justice. I hope the council agrees that this longstanding sculpture should not be taken out of view absent compelling reasons, with particular attention paid to the residents of Larkspur and Green Gray. In my opinion, removals should only occur when there is general agreement among the community that the sculpture is a symbol of oppression. The situation before the council is not in any way, shape, or form similar to the removal of realistic monuments of Confederate leaders placed at the doorsteps of the pillars of power. Even if the council agrees that the sculpture symbolizes oppression to most, taking the sculpture down should be a last resort. I previously proposed putting a plaque near the sculpture, explaining the history of Sir Francis Drake. Also proposed is a renaming of it, like the renaming of Drake High School. My personal preference is to erect an appropriate counter sculpture. If you like this idea, sources of funding can be explored. I'm also in favor of creating a diversity sculpture park. Putting it together could be healing and fun, but I'll save that idea for another day. Please take whatever time is necessary for you to make the right decision for your constituents. Decommissioning art can be used as a double-edged sword with rather frightening censorship implications. I just wanted to, and one of the, or a few of the speakers have mentioned the fact that the first thing they see when they come into Marin is the sculpture. Well, strangely, I was surprised how many people didn't even know it was there. It's very hard to see from most vantage points, and it's, and it's hidden by vegetation. So I think that's a false claim. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being here tonight. Looks like we have about three more, four more hands raised. Mia?
Hi, my name is Mia Eisenberg. I went to what is formerly known as Drake High School. I'm a part of the Drake Alumni Network for Equity and Inclusion, and we are working to create a better equity system in Marin. And I just wanted to say that I would like to, I would like for all of us who are white to change our perspective a little bit, and think about how it would feel to be a person of color in Marin in our very predominantly white community. As some people may know, a lot of the house deeds in Marin still say that there are no Black people allowed, that there are no Jews allowed. And I just learned this in my history class, but not all history classes are being taught this. So I feel that that is important to acknowledge, our history in redlining, and our history as a very segregated and very white community. I would really appreciate for all of the people that have spoken in favor of not removing the statue, to take another look from another perspective, and to think about how it must feel to be a person of color in our community, as well as look at the systems of oppression that are so present in our community, how our school districts, how our housing system works, the fact that we don't really have very much low-income housing, and the fact that this statue, whether we like it or not, many people of color will see it as a system, as a representation of these systems of oppression, of colonism, and of Native Americans, or, sorry, excuse me, indigenous people getting raped and murdered. And I really appreciate the council listening to what I have to say. And I would really encourage you all to do more research on the Coast Mewoc, and listen to our community members that have been silenced for so long. I yield my time. Thank you.
Mia?
Hi, can you hear me?
Are you Harris?
Yes.
Harris Neal. Yeah, I see your name here. I sure wish you could hear us, but we don't.
Yeah, I'm Harris. I'm a lifelong resident of Marin. And I'm here to state very strongly that we must not bring back the statue of Sir Francis Drake. It is a repugnant symbol of not only a prolific flavor and generally evil man, but also a symbol of the colonization of the Americas and genocide of the indigenous peoples here. The artist Dennis Patton himself said, and I quote, "The statue embodies a historical event of a Western European British citizen who circumnavigated the world, bringing a flag to the shores of Marin County." To be clear, Patton is referring to the violent conquest of the Americas. He is literally glorifying colonization. This is not a history that we should glorify, and this is not a history that we should be proud of. Additionally, the statue, I don't know if you've taken a good, long look at it, but it's frankly an eyesore. All of these calls, calling it beautiful public art, I really, I can't understand that. It's blob-like, it's rust-colored, it has a frankly comically prominent crotch bulge. This is not a beautiful, this is not beautifying our landscape here. This is just a symbol of a repugnant history that we should not be glorifying. Keep the statue down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looks like we have about, well, a few more people are adding their names. Looks like council member and ex-mayor Larry Chu is up next.
Hi, good morning, or good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I wrote my comments in. I won't go over that again. But I just would like to state that if, you know, we go back to June of 2018, Marin County Council and Mayor and Council Members Meeting, we had to read that book, The Color of Law. And one of the things we determined from that conversation was that systemic racism in our laws and public policies is relevant in Marin for more discussion. For your discussion tonight, what I'd like to suggest is that it's really too narrow to think about keeping or removing the statue or the intent of the artist. But more so, it should focus on a discussion and evaluation of how harmful actions against people of color of how harmful actions against people of color in the past continue to be harmful by the symbolism within our culture, which are reminders of those past actions perpetrated. So I will leave it at that, and good luck on your discussions. Thank you.
Barbara, you've spoken already. Is there, I'd like to allow the others who haven't spoken, and then we'll come back, so that everybody gets at least one round. So hang on there. It looks like Brandon Johnson.
Hey, how's it going? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very cool. Yeah, I just want to say, yeah, as an African American, hearing some of these comments is just extremely, extremely hurtful. I've been crying through this, I've been shivering through this. So I just want people to, hopefully you can hear my pain. I don't know if you guys can see me right now, but hopefully you can see it.
Can see you, can hear you.
Yeah, you know, folks need to know how harmful both these symbols are and these comments coming from our community are. You know, the artist had Sir Francis Drake on his website. It was titled Sir Francis Drake. Okay, so I don't know what his original intention was, but clearly he embraced it. I'm sure he probably even profited off of it, being in magazines, things like that, getting noticed for this piece. Okay, so whatever the original intention was, he embraced it. And what we can see is that's, you know, whether it's Drake or not, it's obviously, you know, resembles a colonialist statue and symbol. And so it's harmful. We've heard Lucina, Coast Mewoc, you know, saying what she's been saying, which is that these symbols of Drake needs to come down. So you have African Americans saying it, you've got the Coast Mewoc saying it. And at this point, all I have to ask is, who are you gonna believe now? Who are you gonna listen to? Okay? At this time where we're being told that folks are listening, and I'm staring at a lot of white faces right now. People keep telling us they're listening. So who are folks listening? Are they truly going to believe us when we say that things are racist? That we say that things are offensive? Or are we just gonna get brushed aside again? Okay? That's, the decision made here is gonna tell us a lot about that. Okay, so we're just asking to be believed. That's it. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. It looks like Joan Lubomerski hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, thank you, members of the council. First, I'd like to thank you for having this meeting and for dealing with this, something that's really an important issue for our community. I personally share many of the concerns expressed about Sir Francis Drake and his activities in colonialism and the slave trade, and some very really awful things. However, streets and schools' names can be changed. This is what I said in my letter to the council. And I think that we should recognize that change can happen like that and that the statue be dedicated as Don Quixote. And I like the idea very much of a statue, of a plaque to explain. I think that having that there will actually be a plus for educating our community, educating our young about Drake and the things that he did, and also about Don Quixote, and also about about the values of our community in terms of continued art and continued and our concern about art. But again, I think that names can be changed. It can be rededicated in a very positive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan, and I'll reference people that you did submit a written comment also. Looks like Amanda. Amanda?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I am a born and raised, third-generation Marin County citizen. I live in Larkspur. I've lived here for 10 years. I'm in education. I am a music teacher and a musician myself. I have a degree in music. And I have to echo what Brandon said. The first step of being anti-racist is to believe those who are oppressed. So we are a community of white people, largely. I mean, of course, there are others, but really, the people making decisions, the people calling the shots are white people. We are the people of privilege, and we make these decisions based on our own experience, which is kind of backwards, if you think of it, right? If our identity is created for us to not have to see the pain of all these people, how is it that we're gonna change anything? So if these people are saying the statue is causing them pain, discomfort, in a place where they live, pay taxes where they work, maybe they can't afford to live or access housing here, but they come here to work, or they come here just to be here, and the first thing they see is a proven slave owner, slave creator, if he's the first British person to bring slavery here. I just think that this is larger than just this board. It's larger than the people, you know, making these decisions. We have to think of the other perspective. The second thing is, I just, I hear so many people talking about art and art for art's sake, and why are we censoring art? And I just, you know, I've studied jazz music my whole life, and as a white person, it's been really confusing. And I just, all I can say is, I don't know why we're preserving white male representations of art over everything else at this point in time. There is such a rich community, and there's such wonderful art. Why is it that the white male artist, why is this piece of art so, so important to this community that it's more important than how our own citizens feel? I just think that this statue needs to go away. And yes, the conversations need to continue. We're not erasing anything by getting rid of this. It needs to be about a larger body of people. And maybe, maybe we need to seek sources, anti-racist sources, outside this board, outside of our own local governments, because maybe we just don't know. We don't have the knowledge, we don't have the experience. Thank you so much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Amanda. It looks like Simon is the person who's not spoken before. Simon?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Simon. I live in Santa Fe, and I want to echo the call to keep the statue down permanently. I think it's unacceptable to make a monument out of a slaver or honor someone who has harmed so many people, who represents so much evil. I cannot imagine being so unwilling to listen to people of color's voices and recognize how harmful this statue is to our community. I don't even know how this needs to be a conversation, how people cannot be aware, how people aren't aware enough about like how society works to recognize what this statue represents. Like, it's evil, and it represents white supremacy. It's literally that simple. How, like, it's not even a good-looking statue. No one was out in the streets six months ago talking about how much they love the statue. It's like, it's an evil, racist statue, so we should take it down permanently. That's as simple as it is. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Simon. Allison, do we have any other emailed-in comments at this point?
Thank you. We received one further emailed comment. This comes from Jory Jones of South Green Court. She, they write, "Don Quixote was not a conquistador, nor in the novel did he even leave Spain. He was influenced by medieval knights, not 1600s conquerors. It was also the first modernist novel which began the movement away from imperialism to an age of natural unalienable rights." Gen Z, 19-year-old, and they indicate a neutral stance on this item.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who's in the audience who has not spoken yet who would like to make a comment?
I apologize. One further email just came in as I was reading that last one.
Oh, okay.
This comes from Dawn Matheson, also of South Green Court. "I would really like a more creative solution than just removing the statue. How amenable are those opposed to the statue open to a less binary solution? Please see one idea I emailed in earlier." And they indicate a neutral stance on the item.
Okay, it looks like Michael Vaughn has raised his hand now, and he has not spoken before. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you for accepting my call. As you can probably, I'm one of these evil white males that is continually being referred to. And also, from the accent, you can probably hear, I'm originally from England. But I don't want you to think that that fact is affecting what I'm gonna say here. I've actually been here in the United States since 1964. I came when I was 26 years old. I'm now 82, and I've lived in Larkspur since 1970. So I'm a 50-year resident of Larkspur. I can accept what a lot of these people are saying. But I can also look between the lines and see there are a lot of other agendas here. I've done a bunch of research on Sir Francis Drake. Frankly, I never really considered him before this thing came up and I started reading the paper and reading the emails, et cetera. I have a book called The Romance of Colonization that I inherited from my father. It was written in 1897 by a man by the name of... Sorry, I have to look it up.
Alright.
G. Gordon Barnett. It's available. If you Google it, you'll find it. I looked through it. There are a couple of chapters on Sir Francis Drake and Sir Walter Raleigh, who was about the same time as he. From all that I can ascertain from this book, and it's quite extensive, and it's a well-known book, and from what I've picked up from Wikipedia, Sir Francis Drake was not a major trade slaver. Trade, major trade slaving to the United States didn't start till the Jamestown settlement was in effect, which was what, 1607, 1610? Sir Francis Drake died in 1595, 1597. He was involved with trades to some extent because his major job was going out, and this was commissioned by the Queen, going out finding Spanish, Portuguese, and Dutch ships that were doing the slave trade. But his job was to get the gold that was in those ships. He did that, and at the same time, acquired the black people that were being carried as slaves. He then took them to his next port of call, probably traded them in for the supplies and other goods that he wanted. It's also known that he took a group of 60 slaves that he acquired that way to England and helped them to assimilate into the British society. He also took a particular slave and trained him and started on the job of being a shipbuilder in England. Also in this book is a story of when Sir Francis Drake came to the, on his last voyage around the world, came along the west coast of the United States, up from Acapulco, came to what was probably Drake's Bay.
Mr. Vaughn, our time is, we have more people to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't notice that.
That's alright.
You can tell where I'm coming from. I appreciate what you're doing, and I really hope you make a decision that's not based on the threats on some of the people that have spoken this evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you for participating. We have a few new hands of people who haven't spoken before. One is West Marin Activism Hub. Could you just please identify your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Emma Newman. I live in San Geronimo, California.
Welcome, Emma.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in just to lend my support to all of the opinions coming in that believe that it was the right thing to bring down the statue. I wanted to just highlight that although there is multiple opinions about the history of Drake, I think that it's important to recognize the history of Marin County, specifically with the coastal Mewoc and Pomo people who lived here. I think that if we're going to have a 30-foot-tall statue anywhere in Marin County, especially in Larkspur, it should be of, most likely, someone who lived here for an extended period of time, and ideally, a black or indigenous person of color, like someone from the coastal Mewoc or Pomo people who came here and were here long before Drake. So I wanted to echo that support, and I also wanted to thank you for hearing all of the varying opinions and for taking the statue down prior to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for participating tonight. It looks like Kate has not spoken before. Kate, can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Kate, and I'm a lifelong resident of Marin County.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to further support for the call to permanently keep the Drake statue removed. It is inconceivable to me that we, especially during this time period, would not listen to the voices of people who have been most affected by seeing this Drake statue every single day. The BIPOC folks in Marin are a minority, and as a majority, we have, we need to listen to them and hear the voices, the voices which have been suppressed for so long by us, the people in power. Therefore, I would really like to reiterate the point that it is so, so important that we keep this Drake statue down because it represents a harmful and oppressive idea. Thank you. I see my time.
Thank you, Kate. It looks like Dean. Dean has raised his hand. Dean Hoagland. Sir, can you unmute yourself or be unmuted? Allison, is he?
Yes, Dean, you should be receiving a request to unmute. And if you're unable to do so, you may email your comments to comment@cityoflarkspur.org.
So, is there anyone else in the audience while Dean is working on this to unmute who has not spoken and would like to speak? Could you raise your hand?
Good evening.
Oh, there you are. Okay, sir. Go ahead and get started.
And I'm a survivor. That's who I am. I'm actually a survivor of what we're speaking about. And what I mean by that is, I am a direct descendant of Maria Copa. And we come from the village of Ekitamal, which is currently the town of Nikaso. So I'm Coast Mewoc. And, you know, like I said, I started this conversation off in saying I'm a survivor of what has been shared by so many people and what Drake represents, you know, with, you know, the intentional, you know, colonialism acts. And, you know, it's reflective of the history of this country, too, what it was built on, the genocide, and, you know, the historical trauma that my people experienced. But again, we are resilient. We are still here. We did not vanish. I know somebody mentioned that earlier. No, you know, I am not currently a resident of Marin, you know, because my ancestors and my elders, we were, you know, we were relocated. We were forcibly removed from our homelands. And so, but we still survive. And currently, I live in Sonoma County. But, you know, and for the last 13 years, I've been conducting ceremonies, our traditional practices. And so to show people that, yes, we have survived and, you know, we still, we still recognize, you know, who we are through our culture. And it's something that we want to continue and to educate and tell our story, tell the true history of Marin and our people. And so I hope that, you know, this government body will take it upon themselves to refrain from even considering putting that statue back up because of what it represents. And I thank you for the time and opportunities to speak with you all this evening. And I appreciate everyone's opinion, everyone's voice. And, yeah, I'm just so thankful, and I have a lot of gratitude, you know, for you all allowing us this opportunity and this time. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here to participate. It looks like we have a Sabrina Ferreira who has not spoken yet.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for holding this space. I just wanted to share my opposition to putting the statue back up for those who would like it to reappear. I think it had a good run. We all, well, some of us enjoyed, those of you who really liked it, enjoyed it while it was there, it's okay that it's moving on now. If it makes other people feel unsafe, and it makes other people feel unseen, and makes other people's history feel unheard, I think it's okay to let go of a statue. Life will go on. The history will still be in the books. And there are many, you know, other things that I think we could, we could honor, really. There's a lot of history with the Coast Mewoc peoples that were not taught, a lot of... that were not taught, a lot of children who think that indigenous people don't exist anymore, that the fact that that's a thing is super insulting to the coastal Miwok people who are still here, who are still underserved. So I don't think it's such a terrible thing that people's lives are going to be just terrible after the statue stays gone. So I hope you guys please consider, just like, if you can make any decision that makes the peoples feel safer, more seen, and more heard, my question to you is, why wouldn't you? So, yeah, again, thank you for holding this space for us to speak. Everything will be okay to those who really want to keep the statue. We're going to be okay, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sabrina. It looks like Needy. Am I seeing that right? Neely?
Needy.
Okay. Welcome, Needy.
Hi, thank you for having me. So my name's Needy, and I am the resident of Marin County. And I believe it was the right thing to take down the Sir Francis Drake statue and to take away the name from the high school. It does not have a vibrant, peaceful, beautiful sense of peace for the community. It is not a good sense of the community as well. It is a sign of oppression and cruelty towards people of color and indigenous people. I believe that Marin can do better and create a change to believe that people of color and get rid of Drake permanently. I yield the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Another person with their hand raised just has an S, but I would really like to know what your name is, just so we can introduce you. Are you there?
Yeah, my name's Sam.
Oh, hi, Sam.
Hi, Sam. I just want to say that I support the removal. I don't think that you should put it back up. It's 2020, and the world and the nation is in a turning point right now. And putting that statue back up would put us back in history and would say, "People of color, you don't matter." It would say, "White supremacy, long live it." And I think that, right now, with it being down, if artists and if other people have a love for Don Quixote and all of that, there's other ways that you can honor that. To use the statue and to use that as something for why it needs to come back up is not fair to the experiences of indigenous people and people of color. And so I think that, moving forward, it's about looking to the future. How are we going to come together as Marin County? Because white people have benefited from their privilege and their position, and minorities have been left to live in areas like the canal, like Marin City. And so that is very much connected to a statue that is from a former slave trader. You know, for people of color to have to continue to educate white people on why these things are still relevant is really difficult. It's really difficult because all the podcasts are out there, all the information is out there, and so it's time to get with it. Because that is the past, and we are now moving towards the future. So I hope that the statue stays not where, not anywhere, and that the name change is not only for the high school but also for the street, and that Marin County look towards reparations. How can we honor the coastal Miwok people? How can we teach indigenous learnings and culture to the youth, to the people that don't know anything about it when this is their land that was taken from them? So thank you so much.
I appreciate you coming to speak or being here to give us your opinion. Allison, were there any more emails sent in?
We received two more emails, one from someone who hasn't provided comments and one from someone who has already. I'll read the one that hasn't spoken yet. This comes from Arlene Fox. "I'm a third-generation resident of Larksburg, and I, my family members, and friends have always viewed the sculpture as Don Quixote. Artwork can be controversial, as you know, often reinterpreted during different time periods. I can understand the hurt and pain that many feel. If we don't like something, does that mean we tear controversial wartime paintings off museum walls and destroy sculptures we interpret negatively? If we do, we risk censoring the very teaching lessons we need to learn. For example, the German government maintains concentration camps. Is it painful to people of Jewish descent? You better believe it, but the Germans kept some concentration camps so that their schoolchildren are required to visit them to learn about their painful history and how it affected others. They could have bulldozed all camps, but they kept them to remind others never to forget. Thank you, Arlene Fox." And that's the end of that comment.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has not had a chance to speak? We're getting close to nine o'clock now and would like to have sufficient time for the council to discuss and review what you've all been saying. It looks like not, but I do have two people who have already spoken before with their hands up. And because I think this is an issue of real importance for our community, I think we can allow a one-minute follow-up. Allison, is it possible to change our clock to a one-minute follow-up? Not a five. Let's do that. I really appreciate everyone being here, but we need to make sure that we have sufficient time for this conversation. So if you have something additional, but please just make sure it's something additional that will add content to this. Barbara Solomon, thank you for being patient. We need to unmute. Well, let's keep Barbara in the queue because she may have stepped out. And go to Yavar. Are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, they are. Okay, Yavar, how about one more minute of talk? Thank you.
Yeah, well, I can give a minute of talk. I don't want to take any more time. I did not want to do a second public comment. I was just making sure that our position would be represented if there was a second round. I would love to hear the council. I believe the position against the name has been made clear. Thank you so much. Against the name and the statue has been made clear. Thank you so much.
All right. If your hand is raised inadvertently, you can easily lower your hand with the little button at the bottom of the screen. Barbara, are you back? This may have been inadvertent, left on, so let's move to Pat Rivasio.
Hi. Well, I have listened to all of the comments and read all of the emails, and I would like to say something very strange happened to me tonight. I changed my mind. I think that the voices of the people who feel oppressed, and I hadn't really thought of it as being like this European male colonial warrior standing there. I always thought he was a welcome to Marin. But now hearing the voices of those who have been so long oppressed by Marin's unfortunate history and our unfortunate way we have come together and not come together as a community, I think it should not go back to that place. I think the city of Larksburg should put it up for auction and use the money that is gained from the sale. You'll probably get somebody who wants it on their private property and use the money from the sale to commission a new piece of art, perhaps by the same artist even, celebrating the original residents of Marin the Miwok. So never let anybody say, "I never changed my mind. I changed my mind."
Yeah. Well, that's what community listening is all about. So we have two final speakers with one minute each because they have spoken before, which is Sabrina and then Michael. And then I'm going to wrap it up so that we can really bring this back to the council. Sabrina?
Thank you so much for this little follow-up. That's really appreciated. I just wanted to comment on the last email that was read about how Germany still has concentration camps to remind people of their painful past. I don't think it's to remind people necessarily. I don't think that's the purpose. I think the purpose is to learn from history's mistakes. But I don't think it's a commemorative thing. I don't think that those are still there and any of the historical, like, things about the Holocaust are there to be celebratory. Whereas Sir Francis Drake, I don't hear as being condemned or taught about in a very real way, just like a lot of the colonization of the Americas in general. There are all these pioneers and explorers who discovered this and that. They were not discovered for the first time. Human beings already lived here. So I just really disagreed with that opinion. I wanted to share that. Thank you so much for allowing me to do that.
Great. So we have, I kind of opened a can of worms by having a second round. I'm going to limit it now, else we won't really get, we've heard a lot of comments, and we really need to narrow down and drill into this a little bit more. So I'm going to have two more people give a follow-up statement, Michael and Stephanie. And you're always welcome to email in your other comments, but that will allow us time. It's almost nine o'clock. The Larksburg City Council tends to not think well after 10:00 PM, so I want to make sure we get a chance to get through this. So Michael and then Stephanie. Michael, you have one minute, please.
Yes, thanks so much. Just very quickly, there was an accusation a little earlier that this was not being dealt with in a democratic way because we were being ruled by the seven faces up on the screen. Would it not be possible to have an item on the next local election so that the people of Larksburg could vote whether to keep it or not? Thank you.
Stephanie, one minute, please, and your follow-up comment.
Hi. I just also have to reiterate that there's a big difference between the ways in which the Holocaust is memorialized in Germany versus an adoring statue like that of Sir Francis Drake. I am both a descendant of Jews that were murdered in the Holocaust, as well as having a non-Jewish German father, and it's incredibly insulting to hear that comparison be made. I think it'd be great if Marin County had a very thoughtful memorial to the genocide of Coast Miwok people and to understand how painful that history was, but that's very different from having a gigantic statue of a male colonist hovering over the bay. And just two other very quick points. I think that all of this about renaming it to Don Quixote, what does Don Quixote have to do with Marin County? I would really love to know that. I don't know if we have time to discuss that, but I think it's a sort of ridiculous way of coming up with a justification for keeping the statue. Don Quixote has nothing to do with Marin County, and I'll leave it at that.
Great. Rosa, you're our last caller tonight, so wrap it up. You're our last one. We've had so many wonderful comments and emails sent in. Rosa?
Hi. It's funny. I thought I wasn't going to get on, so. But I would just want to say to the folks who are against the statue, okay, you got it removed. I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to come back. I'm sorry that it ever went down. And as I say, I'm a black person, and I love the statue. I think it was beautiful. But I want you guys to ask yourself, what comes next? You have to run for office. You have to make change. You have to do something. Because taking the statue down, that didn't feed one more mouth, that did not send one more child to college, that did not pay one more rental property. So you see, all those things, whoop-de-doo, we took down that statue. But making a difference in people's lives every day, that is the work of a citizen. That is the work of change, and that is what I implore you to do. Thank you.
Well, we've heard a lot of public comment tonight, and we've had a lot of written in. I think we've had a tremendous amount of participation. And I'd like to compliment and thank everyone for participating. We also have had multiple people send in email comments, so they can participate that way. So at this point, I don't see anyone else, and I think we've had sufficient opportunity to hear from many people. I'd like to, with the other council's approval, close the public comment and bring it back for us for discussion. We've heard a lot. And let's bring it back in to us to talk about what we've heard tonight. It looks like Gabe Paulson would like to start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first wanted to really thank everybody who spoke tonight and everybody who spoke on June 29th and just offer a few reflections. I think we really started a conversation, and to me, it's never been about the statue. It's really much deeper, as many people have brought up. And I wanted to offer that, you know, from the first meeting, I really tried to do some homework and reached out to many of the callers, you know, some of the Coast Miwok. I spoke to Joe Sanchez, who's not in the meeting tonight. And I looked up Ms. Viduru's, you know, website and looked at Will Patey's artwork and have been really trying to learn something. And I think that's my main reflection here, is that we're having a conversation. And it's a really, really important conversation, and it's really about inclusivity. And the one regret I have is if there's a sense of force about this, you know, maybe it's fear, maybe it's desperation. But I really think that, you know, whether the statue goes up or down is sort of secondary. What's important is that we reach consensus. And many people have spoken. Some people have changed their minds. And I think that's the value in all this, is that we are hopefully building community in a more 21st century way. Just one more reflection is, tonight I was particularly moved by Patricia Rivasio, Rosa Thomas, and Mr. Brandon Johnson. I think all of you spoke from the heart, and you spoke about a lot of things that a lot of us really want to hear and need to hear. And so it's my position that the council continue this conversation and that we don't lose sight of the fact that it's not really a statue. It's really about, you know, how we coexist as a community and how we include people. Thank you.
Well said. Dan Hilmer, did you have, your mic is off. I mean, your mic is on. You have something you wanted to contribute?
Apologize for my network issues this evening, Madam Mayor. I would just like to read the letter we received from a former council member and our good friend Larry Chu. Larry was very modest and did not really get to the content of the letter that he wrote to us that's part of the public comment this evening. So I'm just going to read it into the record. He says, "Madam Mayor and City Council, you may recall that our Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers quote homework assignment for the June 2018 meeting was to read a book called The Color of Law in preparation for a moderated discussion on the systemic racism in our laws and public policy. The outcome of that meeting was a general consensus that this was relevant to Marin County. The death of George Floyd, while in custody of Minneapolis police officers, has now forced a national conversation and acknowledgement of the long history of systemic racism. With that, there is the question of whether symbols of oppression and European conquest should remain. Some feel the sculpture at Larksburg Landing is Sir Francis Drake. To others, it reminds them of Don Quixote. The wife of the artist has stated, 'The sculpture has no defining characteristics, markings, or similarities to Drake.' Symbolism has powerful impacts which can evoke feelings of strength, control, or supremacy. The sculpture depicts someone with a sword, armor, helmet, and flag. These are symbolic of the conquistador, a conqueror, in a time in which Native American lands in the area were taken. While it may not have been the original intent of the art, the placement is along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And there is the general belief that Marin County was the landing spot for Drake. That perception has transformed it into a reality. Despite our lack of diversity, the city of Larksburg has always strived to be inclusive. Ultimately, if we want to accomplish that, irrespective of a sculpture's true or perceived origins, this sculpture and any symbols that celebrate oppression or European conquest should be removed. Thank you for your consideration, Larry Chu." I'll leave my comment with that. I think we should take the time to think about all that's been said this evening. I'm very grateful for the wide range of comments offered, and I would find myself in alignment with those comments made by Councilmember Paulson.
Thank you for doing that, for reading that. Scott Candel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start out by thanking everybody for the comments, the letters. This is what democracy is all about, hearing from everybody. It allows us to have an intelligent discussion. I want to also say that what I am about to say, I am saying as a way to open a discussion, not that I'm trying to convince people one way or another, but a way to try to figure this out. As far as the name Sir Francis Drake, I don't see anyone who feels strongly about keeping the name for Sir Francis Drake. Whether the statue stays or not, if it did stay, I don't see any reason to keep that name. So I'm not going to refer to this as Sir Francis Drake statue, as somebody had mentioned. So I'm not going to refer to this as Sir Francis Drake statue, as somebody had mentioned, but we'll call it the Dennis Patton sculpture. In deciding what to do with the sculpture, I am thinking about what is the role of the City Council? There are always going to be things in public that are offensive to a group of people, and it could be this sculpture, it could be a naked woman in the Bon Air Shopping Center, it could be a cross, which people see as a symbol of war and, you know, wars before of religion aid. So what is our role as far as the arbiter of art? I think of the Supreme Court because they have to do this also, and they have to decide, let's say pornography, for example, is something pornographic or is it art? And their definition is very loose, and it basically says it's pornography, you know pornography when you see it. And trying to look at a standard like that, is a sculpture offensive, you know, when you see it? I look at this particular sculpture and I say no. And the reason I say no is because the statue of a man with a sword and a helmet and a flag, this sculpture in itself is not offensive. The next question to be asked is, okay, but is the symbolism of this sculpture offensive? And that's a lot more grit, because to a lot of people, it is offensive. And how do we handle that? And one way to just to take it down, and again, the fear of that is the next sculpture's going to be offensive to people as well, whether it's, as I said, the naked woman or whatever it happens to be. So the other question is, is there something that we can do to take advantage of this opportunity, this moment in history, to turn this controversy into a positive, into a learning experience, into something that meets everybody's, you know, desires? And in trying to come up with that, I was thinking of a plaque or a dedication for this particular sculpture that would actually be two plaques. You know, one would be from the artist's perspective, saying, you know what, this sculpture signifies adventure, or it signifies imagination, it signifies exploration, whatever his perspective is. And a second plaque, talking about colonialism, and a way to teach the public the evils of colonialism and to honor the indigenous people. And I think one of the things that struck me, several people, Julia, Mia, there were a couple of people that talked, that said it's not being taught in schools. Well, maybe we can take this opportunity to be the teacher of this history in a way that takes it from a sculpture that is seen as honoring colonialism and turn it more into the Holocaust-type museum that says, hey, this is history, and we shouldn't erase this history, but we should acknowledge it so that we don't repeat it. And so we can teach people about this history so that we honor the people that were hurt by it.
So Scott, let me ask you, just to just clarify something with that position, because I'm curious about that position. To do that teaching, it would require the statue to be returned to its place, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So your position, that's not your standard, that's one of the options that you're looking at?
Yes, yes, and again, I'm open to the conversation, but it may be an opportunity for us to put the sculpture back up and say, this is a sculpture that is going to be honoring, you know, teaching people about the evils of colonialism, in a way, you know, and, you know, giving, like I said, the artist will have an opportunity to tell his perspective, and maybe the indigenous tribes will write the second plaque, or we'll figure out a way to do this so that it honors the people that we want to honor and teaches the public something that is not being taught, and turns this into something that is a positive for everybody. That's my thoughts right now, but I am completely open to hearing other people's perspectives and being persuaded to learn it.
What do the rest of you think about that option that was just outlined by Scott? You raised your hand on that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Kevin, you raised your, you had something to add.
Oh, yeah. Well, first of all, the reason I raised my hand earlier was I wanted to thank Council member Helmer for reading our former colleague Larry Chu's letter into the record. I spoke with Larry at some length earlier today and very much appreciate his perspective, which I share as he knows. So thank you for that. I think this is a process that we need to continue and have an ongoing dialogue about. I think I've already gone on record as supporting the removal of the statue, open to suggestions that members of the public may have about its disposition. But the reality is, it was a good decision to take it down. It would be a challenge to restore it. But, you know, if there are folks in the community, whether it's the artist or others that have good ideas about its eventual disposition, particularly if they can provide suggestions about how the funding of its relocation could be provided, that would be terrific. But right now, the bottom line is that the statue is down, and it's not, in my mind, going back up again.
Gabe, you had your hand, you had some...
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I think you were asking, you know, to comment on Scott's proposal, and I think Kevin said as well. I mean, I want to reiterate, I think it is a learning moment, and I do think it's more than about a statue. And what concerns me is some of the voices who found the statue offensive feel that they were not heard, and I really, I really feel, and I think some of the voices in the 40 or so letters, 39 letters that came in, who may be residents and maybe of a different generation, also feel they're not heard. And to me, that's, that's the part that I would like the council to try to remedy, to the extent we can. This conversation, and then again, it was Patricia Ravazio who sort of gave us this example of how people can change their minds, and it was Rosa Thomas who said, it's more than a statue, it's about, you know, the structure of society. I think that's where I'd like to see this go. So the specifics of Scott's proposal are not as much of a concern, and the position of Vice Mayor Haroff of keeping it down is not my position. My position is that we really continue this discussion. I find it unfortunate that it had to be taken down in an emergency fashion. It should have been taken down in a consensual fashion, and we, I hope we can still reach that. Wherever we end, I hope it ends, because that's what defines our community, and I think that will be the legacy we leave.
And Madam Mayor, again, it's Kevin Haroff. I'm not suggesting that we preclude any consideration of different possibilities, but I do think it's important that we acknowledge the voices that we've heard tonight and that we acknowledge that the statue was taken down for good public safety reasons, and restoring it would create the same kinds of challenges that motivated the taking down of the statue in the first place. So we can, we can do that at some great expense to the city, if that's what the City Council and everyone wants us to do. But it seems to me that there are probably other alternatives that would maybe make, be more respectful of the overall community than, than that. So I would be very reluctant to see us go in that direction, quite honestly.
Scott, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, and with all respect to Vice Mayor Haroff, I disagree in the sense that I think the taking down of the statue for public safety reasons should have no bearing on this decision. If we all agree that it shouldn't go up because it's offensive, it's the right thing to do, whatever we decide, so be it. But I don't think we say, hey, there's a angry mob of 50 people who are going to do damage to something that's dangerous and therefore, you know, let's just prevent, you know, potential harm, and I think that's just the wrong way to govern, and, you know, that's just going to encourage, you know, that behavior in the future. So I agree with the temporary decision of the city to take it down as a public safety measure, because, you know, emotions are running high, and we don't want people getting hurt, I agree with that. But I don't think that should be the basis for policy.
So what I think I'm hearing from everyone and from the public is, we are, is still in an ongoing process of this discussion, not only of Sir Francis Drake as his legacy, but in a larger extent, what's happening in the review of the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, this name of the school, and other place, named places within the county. And I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation for a while. We have created a safe spot to store Dennis Patton's piece, and it is in a secure location now and is not further a chance for it to be damaged. We might need to realize that it's time to take a breather on this and give it a little bit of time to figure out how this conversation continues throughout its broader extent in the county. Before we enact what we're going to do, either return it, sell it, move it somewhere else, give it back to the artist, I don't, I'm not feeling that that needs to be decided tonight, because the staff recommendation is to defer this decision while the ongoing five jurisdictional process to review the name continues. How do people feel about that?
Fine with me.
That means that the statue stays in its place for the time being. It's no longer in the public sphere until we decide where and if that should happen. That's the staff recommendation, and it sounds like that's sort of the consensus of what I'm seeing, with possible alternatives to view later, and some of them were outlined by some of the speakers, it could be to reestablish it, it could be to sell it, it could be to give it back to the artist. All of those are really uncertain at this time.
Madam Mayor, I would encourage us to express consensus to support the staff recommendation.
So the staff recommendation, pardon? The staff recommendation is that the City Council is, for any decision with regards to Sir Francis Drake's statue, well, the five jurisdictional process to review the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard continues, and we are participants in that conversation, but we're not guiding that conversation at this point. It sounds like Vice Mayor Haroff and Councilmember Helmer agree with that staff recommendation. I'm seeing Gabe nod his head.
Yes, agreed.
Everybody's getting kind of dark in that night, as the night comes on. And what about you, Scott?
I would go along, if that's the council's decision, I would go along with that.
I think, yes. Dan Schwartz?
I wanted to add one suggestion, Madam Mayor. I think I've heard a lot tonight that suggests that I should have some one-on-one conversations with each of you about the different types of outcomes you're interested in for these broader conversations, so that when we return, I think we owe it to the five of you and to the public that we frame what our broader conversation is going to be about. I think it'd be appropriate for me to work individually with each of you to hear your individual perspectives, so that when I come back, I give you a report that explains that you want to have more context than just about the statue itself.
I think that sounds fair, and I, I think we're all learning. I appreciated so much of the comments that came in tonight that are challenging us to think outside of our own sphere and the history that we know or we believe we know. And I think it's an opportunity, as Councilmember Paulson says, to, to open up this conversation to a broader context of individuals who haven't participated with us before and learn what they have to say. So I, I think that would be a wise thing for us to do, and also to recognize the scope of what we do have authority, power to do as a five-member City Council, which goes to Scott Candell's point about what our goal and mission is in this decision-making. Is there anything further on that? You have the direction that we, it appears that we've all agreed to accept the staff recommendation to keep the statues securely positioned where it is and to re-engage this, keep engaging with this process.
Has moved.
Okay. And once again, thank you for those who are still in the audience, and I'd like to encourage you also to participate in the conversations that are being held on the county-wide level. And there is one coming up in regards to invited speakers to discuss perspectives on Sir Francis Drake and his historic role in the world. So put that out there. That information will be available probably on the county's website. Okay, this brings us to item 8.2, which is transition of the childcare facility. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you can bear with me for one minute while I call up the correct information on my screen. So the council will recall, as part of its process to deliberate and approve a budget for fiscal year 21, our recommendation to the council was to begin a process to wind down an enterprise fund called the Twin Cities Childcare Enterprise Fund. An enterprise fund is a city account or fund that is designated to serve a purpose where operations are to bring in sufficient revenue to offset costs. And the city has, for several years, operated two enterprise funds. One was to run it, to fund and run a childcare center on the Neal Cummins campus, that's the subject of tonight's discussion, and the other is to run a summer school program that's a series of camps that are typically offered over a several-week period each summer. As the council's aware, a combination of two factors have made it near impossible for the city to contemplate operating the childcare facility in any enterprise fashion. The first is the impact of COVID-19, and the regulations and restrictions on childcare operations meant that the revenue streams were not going to be sufficient to offset the cost of operation. The second issue was that a number of the staff elected to retire, and so we also lacked a lot of the resources. Seeing those two things, the Ad Hoc Committee that was formed by the council to look at financial issues with me during COVID-19, met with me to discuss whether or not it was appropriate to approach the school district, the Larkspur Corredum and Dairy School District, to see if they would be able to make use of our facility. They did evaluate the facility and felt it would be tremendously helpful to the school district to use the property. The final use of it, I think it's still in some debate by the school district, it will be some form of childcare, whether they offer childcare for the faculty... It will be some form of childcare, whether they offer childcare for the faculty or whether it will also include members of the public. I don't, they've made their final determination. Staff, after having gotten that feedback from the school district, we reviewed our agreements with the school district and with the town of Cordillari for the site where the property is located. And effectively, the lease agreement, which is in front of you, was drafted in a way so that the city put the current buildings in place on land that's owned by the school district and the town of Cordillari. And then the value of those buildings was depreciated each year, with the idea being that if for some reason the school district needed to take the property at some point, the city would be compensated for that depreciated value. That's not the scenario that's played out. The agreement was drafted with that concept in mind. But what's played out here is we are getting out of the childcare business and we have a facility that was funded by this enterprise operation and now has an opportunity to provide service to our community through the school district. So we met with the school district and with the town of Cordillari and then provided them with a lease termination notice. And then we are bringing tonight a proposal for an agreement that would terminate our lease and effectively turn the buildings on the property over to the Larkspur-Cordillari School District. In doing so, we would forego any claim we might have to that depreciated value of $195,000 at this time. But I want to emphasize, that's not general fund money. That's money that would be restored to an enterprise fund that we're attempting to wind down at the moment. So it is my strong recommendation that we enter into this lease termination agreement and give this property to the school district so that they can begin to make arrangements for its use as part of their operation and their provision of service in the coming school year. I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And this is a topic we've discussed before, a couple of months ago when we were doing the financial update. Are there questions of this, continuance of this, not continuance, but is there further questions about this agreement? Doesn't look like it. I think it was pretty straightforward, explained to us several times now. It looks like you need to adopt a resolution 6220, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease termination agreement. So anyone interested in putting that forward?
I'd be happy. Yeah, I think we'd all want to move it, so.
I'll second it.
Whoever, whoever spoke up first is fine.
It sounds like Kevin Haroff put forward the, the, now I'm, the resolution, and Councilmember Candell seconded it. Allison, I think we need a roll call vote, right?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes. Thank you very much for that. And our second to the last item is the 8.3 update on city activities in response to COVID-19. I'd like to acknowledge that we have one public comment that came in regarding this item from Mr. Carroll, and that is available to be seen on our agenda webpage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So two separate things I want to update the council on. The first is something that Councilmember Paulson alluded to, which is that through the Marin, the mayors and city council members of Marin County Association, the cities all participated in the bulk purchase of masks, the paper mask, the disposable mask that you all are familiar with, I think, at this point.
Right.
I see Councilmember Paulson has one there for you to see. We made a bulk purchase for each of the communities to then distribute as they feel is appropriate. In our case, we purchased 2,500 masks. And we've already made arrangements to give 1,000 of those masks to the central police so that they can have those in their cars. And when they're out on patrol, they can offer masks to people and remind them that it's important to wear a mask. We'll be looking at other opportunities to do distribution and education along a similar vein with more of those masks. And so I think that's a worthwhile program that we, that we want to launch here. And it's, I think, what most of the cities wound up doing with the first purchase of masks that were made. I also want to acknowledge that, separate from that bulk purchase, the Marin sanitary agency, the Marin sanitary who does our garbage service, reached out to us and said that they were shifting to a fairly significant mask for their workers. And so they no longer needed their reserve of N95 masks. And so they actually offered the, the franchise agencies N95 masks. And so we received roughly 1,000 of those masks from Marin sanitary, which we'll be using partly for our own purposes, partly for our first responders, and then as needed for the public as well. And I want to thank them for that contribution. Before I go on, I don't know if Councilmember Paulson wants to add anything. He's been very instrumental in these conversations about the mask purchasing program.
No, you said it well. Thank you very much.
So the more significant activity that's been occurring over the last few weeks that you saw reported in the press, and I've provided some briefings on, is that under the leadership of the county of Marin, the city jurisdictions have been providing input about an ordinance that the county board of supervisors passed that creates a fine system for violations of the public health orders. And that same ordinance empowers the county to designate and essentially deputize certain civil, civic employees to enforce the ordinance. And so among the deputized individuals is myself, with my, me being identified as having the further power to deputize members of the city staff. It also, for this purpose, it also clarified that the police organizations throughout the county can enforce this particular ordinance and issue citations under the ordinance. The process that we're going through right now is the formation of a countywide task force that will work collaboratively to do the enforcement activities. And so I've been engaged in those conversations and trying to figure out how Larkspur can appropriately play a role. And the idea here is that as complaints come in about non-compliance, so that no one in jurisdiction gets overwhelmed because they lack the staffing in that particular moment to deal with that complaint, there will be a task force where on a particular day, certain employees who've been given the enforcement authority for the ordinance can be dispatched to the, the location of the complaint to conduct an investigation and potentially issue a citation. And so we think this is a good solution going forward. And the emphasis in the task force is primarily on businesses. The other issue that the ordinance gets into that we are still having a lot of discussions about what it looks like out in the community is how do we educate individuals about the importance of wearing masks? So much to the discussion we just had about giving out masks to educate people. Do we need to go another step? We're not there yet where we would actually be finding individuals, citing individuals for not wearing a mask. And part of that is because the public health orders make a lot of allowances for individuals to be out in the public not wearing masks. And the investigation's going to be nearly impossible. So I think what's more likely is you're going to see your public employees choose days where we go out into the community and we're a little more aggressive, pulling people over and talking to them about the importance of wearing a mask and giving them an educational moment and giving them a mask if they don't have one. I think you're going to see days and times where we do that in a very public way. And we're going to see how that, how effective that is. I will say, I have been listening to the discussion on complaints coming in. And one area that I had not realized was one that concerned countywide that your staff is now taking a closer look at is short-term rentals operating in violation of the order. And that takes different forms, but as you know, short-term rentals, rentals less than 30 days are not legal in residential neighborhoods here in Larkspur. We've always done a complaint-driven process. We may need to switch to a model where we're doing a little more monitoring and looking for short-term rentals to make sure that they are compliant with the order. So we're, we're discussing with other communities how much success they've had with different approaches to doing that type of monitoring. And I imagine we'll be reporting back to you on that in the near future. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'm up into questions.
Any questions about the current status of our response to coronavirus? Thank you for that explanation. I know it's, it's a constantly moving target. So I know it takes a lot of staff time to really implement the public health orders as they change, not only from our local public health director, but also from the state. That leaves us to our last item, which-
Actually, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I did want to make one comment in response to the written public comment-
Oh, yes.
I, I think the commenter has misunderstood the intent of the city manager of Tipperon when he talked about the decision to issue warnings instead of citations. And he, the public comment suggests that the city council should be setting policy, not the staff. The policy around the stay-at-home orders and the wearing of masks and the other compliance issues are all being set by the public health officer. And the ordinance, as I said, was designed to deputize municipal staff members so that we can be enforcement officers on behalf of the public health officer. And so the city council of Larkspur is not actually in a position to set policy around this particular issue. That directive's coming from the public health officer.
Thank you for clarifying that. Do you have any financial update? Or is there, and that's 8.4.
So I wanted to let the council know that what we've been pleasantly surprised about is the tax, the property tax rule is now complete and looks stronger than we anticipated. We're trying to evaluate now what that final number will be in terms of our impact on the fiscal year that just closed. So I'm offering that to you because that is the one segment of our revenue streams that seems to be holding strong, if not growing. And, you know, there's a lot of speculative reasons why that might be the case. Property values are holding. There seems to be growing interest in moving into the suburbs, so properties are selling. But we were pleasantly surprised at the, at the returns we're seeing.
Well, that's good. Good. Any questions on that, Scott? Yes, Scott, you had a question?
Yeah, and not, not really a question, but I, I had sent everybody an email, not for a offline discussion, but a heads up on my thoughts that moving forward for the next budget year, we are anticipating a substantial shortfall. And I was suggesting that instead of waiting until it gets close to that budget, that we begin discussing that situation sooner rather than later. I realize it is now 9:30 and people are probably not in the mood to start that conversation now. However, for this, every meeting we have the financial update, I'm going to recommend that we turn that into a financial discussion, not just to hear the city manager's report, but for us to begin talking about how we're going to handle the anticipated shortfall and not wait until spring to deal with it.
Okay. Well, I think we, that's something we should consider and think about. I, I'll talk with that, I'll talk with the city manager about that. Not for tonight. It's not agendaiced and it's pretty late, but we will. So any other further questions of that? All right. So our next meeting is August 19th at 6:30. But I'd like to close tonight's, adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Rita Jean Sennett, a long-term resident of Larkspur who moved here in 1968 and who worked as a nurse at the Ross Valley Clinic and rose to nurse manager in her career. But also she was the mother of our fire chief, our ex-fire chief, Bob Sennett, and the grandmother of our current Central Marin Police Officer, Kevin. So just to say, we are feeling the loss for the Sennett family, longtime public servants to our community. And with that being said, I would like to adjourn until August 19th. And for those of you who are still in the audience, thank you very much for participating tonight. Good night, everyone.